Welcome, everyone. It is noon on Wednesday, February 10th. You are tuning into the Board of County Commissioners' regular meeting. And the first, as I called, meeting to order, the first item today is the additions and deletions to the agenda.
Yes, we have one addition to the agenda. It would be the addition of an executive session to continue discussions on items not reached in yesterday's executive session, which would all fall under CRS 246402B.
Thank you, Wes.
24B.
4024B, thank you.
4024B, and we will make those citations as well when we go into executive session. Then, we would now move into public comments, and this is a time to bring matters to the board's attention that are not currently on the agenda. And we'd ask you to identify yourself, and please contain your comments to about three to five minutes. Please tone them up and just say who you are. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name's Michael Lyons. Keep this to three minutes. I have one question. That's a pretty broad and general question for actually everybody in the room.
This is a meeting of the boards. Please address your comments to us.
Okay, well then, I'll address the board. Are you guys comfortable with the people from Canada voting for the President of the United States?
I'm not aware that that's happening, but please continue.
That sounds crazy, actually, to all of us that live here in the United States, and yet, that's exactly what you guys are continuing to allow happen here in Picken County and with the Aspen Ambulance Board of Directors. You guys are allowing people from Snowmass Village, from Redstone, from Basalt, from Thomasville, to vote for the district representatives of a taxing district that they don't live in, the Aspen Ambulance District. I think that that's wrong, and that is basically allowing people from Canada to vote for President of the United States. It's not necessarily illegal, what's going on, but it ain't right. And I would like to see that practice stop. The Aspen Ambulance District is the only district of its kind in the state of Colorado. There are no other districts like it. And if it was such a great idea, why aren't more districts like that? We don't know. I looked back, and I asked a district representative for somebody, the sanitation district, you know, the stuff that we flush down the toilet. They meet once a month. And the Aspen Ambulance District Board of Directors have only met eight times in five years. I asked for all of the meeting minutes recently for the Aspen Ambulance District Board. There were seventeen mentions in that five years, and only eight of those were actual meetings of the Aspen Ambulance District Board of Directors. That's a really low number, and it shows very clearly that you guys don't care about the Aspen Ambulance District.
Mike, you would like us to look into this and respond to you later? What is, I'm kind of wondering, because your last comment really struck me very strongly. I spent an awful lot of time working on the Aspen Ambulance District vote last year. I care very deeply, and I think this entire board cares very deeply about the Aspen Ambulance District. John, I don't know if you want to address any of the comments that have been made about representation on voting for the board, but it was my impression that we are the Aspen Ambulance District Board, and by default, the public of Picken County has voted for us, not Snowmass represent, I mean, to the extent that Snowmass is, all residents of Picken County vote for their county commissioners, but there's no special vote that's given to the Snowmass Fire District or anything on who's the Board of Directors of the ambulance district?
No, it's, the Board of County Commissioners sits as the ambulance district board. From time to time, the board meets, as Mike has indicated, typically to review budgetary approvals and such. And the district is operated through a contract with Aspen Valley Hospital, and the board's delegated to myself to be the liaison with Aspen Valley Hospital on a joint operating committee.
Does that answer your question about other folks voting for who's the ambulance district board?
The people in Snowmass Village vote for you guys. The Picken County residents vote at-large for the Picken County Commissioners.
Yes.
So, an at-large election means people in Snowmass Village, Thomasville, Redstone, Basalt, all get to vote for you guys. They do not live in the Aspen Ambulance District, so therefore, they are voting for a representative of a taxing district that they don't live in.
And so, you are concerned with the structure of how the Aspen Ambulance District was formed and is in our current bylaws, and we could take a look at that?
Yeah, yeah. And a proposed solution, I don't like to come with a problem without a proposed solution. A proposed solution would be, in the United States, there are statistics that say that the ninety-six percent of the citizens in our country are served by fire-based.
Whoops. Okay. Sorry about that. But please, just go to the solution as opposed to background, because we need.
They're, they're served by fire-based EMS. You can look up the valley, and everybody is served by fire-based EMS except for what's happening here. And I suggest that this board take a strong and hard look at moving this antiquated ambulance district and dissolving it and putting those services in with the fire department.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments.
You bet.
Thanks, Mike.
Do we have other public comments here for items not on today's agenda? There being none, I will close the public comment. Okay, are you?
This is your time, sorry.
This is the time, okay, please.
This is your, this is your show.
This is the open.
I'm gonna back you up.
No, that's okay, I was wondering.
Suzanne maybe had skipped.
I'm not really the public.
Yeah.
But I'm here to help John with a request to you.
Okay, well, please come forward then, and let's.
Sleeping in the commissioner's.
John, never.
I asked John to appear. If you all remember, you've granted an approval for TDRs on a property out on East Cypress Creek Road. There's a deadline for that to expire, which is February 22nd, prior to your next meeting. John just contacted me this week about an extension to that request, and I suggested that, since there wasn't time to get on this agenda, and the next agenda would happen after that expiration date, that he could come, that his option would be to come and ask you if you would be willing to hear the request on the 24th, which I guess sort of gives a de facto, at least a couple of day extension of that approval, but that you would hear the request formally at the meeting on the 24th.
I'd really have to look for legal advice about whether that's even a viable option without it being noticed, or?
So, he would need to get on the agenda for the 24th. As it sits right now, would expire, and you guys, at that time, would create a new extension.
So, it could be retroactive to cover the past two days if the board is so inclined to go that way?
Correct. Or the board could schedule a special meeting next week with public notice. That being said, there's no, nothing scheduled for next week.
Yeah.
And it wouldn't be a, it's not required notice, like a public hearing, but obviously putting it on the agenda.
It does notice for a special meeting. I know, I'm out of town next week after the Tuesday meeting. I believe Steve has made commitments for the twenty meetings down in Grand Junction. I don't know, board, would we like to discuss this further at the end of the meeting, during open discussion, or perhaps even advice from our attorney during the executive session? Or do people have inclination of settling it now? George?
So, Suzanne, expires, the extension that we've already given, we gave an extension once, that expires the 22nd.
Correct.
And so, what John is asking for is the building to perhaps be able to get on the agenda, to ask for an additional extension, and we could do that on the 24th, two days later than the current extension.
Correct.
So, I would be willing to entertain listening to John's proposal on the 24th, basically extending that two days.
Being clear that you're not agreeing to extend it this way.
Absolutely.
I agree with George.
See, I see you nodding, Michael.
No.
Okay. And I just want to kind of be clear that there won't be any legal issues raised, because this is a very significant matter of the number of TDRs. It expires, you could reapply for TDRs, but it would be under the new code.
Correct.
And I just am wondering, would a kind of action like that subject us to other parties perhaps suing that we had let that expire, and then we extend it retroactively? Is that really allowed for?
When I looked at this this morning, about ten minutes ago, it did not appear so, but I can't speak with all certainty at this point in time. That's something I would certainly have clear by the 24th.
Okay. Well.
I could just say one thing. We're not trying to cause a problem, but Peter McBride, along with Johnny, are the owners. He's walking the Grand Canyon, and he's not here. We really had an agreement, we felt, in December, but you guys got back, we had a condition we wanted imposed, that there wouldn't be bike trails on the property, be quiet, and we'd like to have it a passive place, and actually have been encouraged by some of the board members of Open Space and Trails to pursue that. It's a little different now, because they've offered less money if it's more passive.
So, we're starting to talk about negotiations that are ongoing.
So, that's what caused us to talk to Suzanne, and ask to stand it a little bit, see if we could resolve that, because I don't know which way Peter wants to go on it.
Okay, so, we'll discuss it on the 24th.
We'll discuss on the 24th. Michael?
So, Laura, so how does this work? Tell me, the, we have TDRs that are, that exist now. That, on the 22nd, they expire?
You would enter the approval on the 24th, nunc pro tunc, going back to the 22nd. So, it's a special way to enter the approval.
What's the Latin term for it?
Nunc pro tunc.
Nun pro?
Nun, N-U-N-C, P-R-O-T-U-N-C. The idea being that the entry of the approval would actually enter as of the 22nd, though it was signed on the 24th.
Okay.
Nun pro tunc.
Yeah, we gotta learn something every day.
I like that.
Okay, so, the direction of the board seems to be to discuss it and put it on the agenda for the 24th.
Thanks.
Thanks, John. Thanks, John.
Are there other members of the public who have items they would like to bring forward to the board's attention at this time? There being none, I will close the public comment and move back over to Commissioner comments. Patty?
I have to say it first, go Broncos. It was great. My grandson's first, first Super Bowl, came out, and it's wearing his orange, so, yeah, it was a great game, it was great for Denver, great for the state of Colorado, and great for all of those here in Aspen who, I sat on my couch by myself and hooted and hollered and flipped channels when I got too upset to watch the game anymore, but, yeah, it's great. So, I just wanted to say it first. Thanks, thanks, Rachel.
Okay, thank you. Oh, wait, wait, one other thing. The pothole.
I want to thank the city of Aspen for making an attempt to fill the pothole in the roundabout. It's my understanding that some temporary settled issue was done there, and hopefully in the spring, we'll be able to get with CEDAT to fix the whole roundabout as a whole. And as Rachel said, it'd be great to see cement going in there, but I don't know if that's the way CEDAT will go, but I want to thank the powers that be for fixing that one that was swallowing small cars.
Thank you. Good, good. Steve?
I would like to congratulate George Newman, who was recently appointed to the BLM Northwest Region Resource Advisory Council of the BLM.
That's great.
And that's a board that advises the BLM on public lands issues. And George, for a long time, has been our representative, like our liaison between the Board of Commissioners and the BLM and Forest Service both, so we appreciate you taking that on that extra task, and I look forward to hearing reports from the meetings.
Yeah, good job, George.
Yeah, very, very true. And I have to kind of add to that, I've been at a number of Western Slope Club Twenty meetings, and when these openings come up, they're all vying for them, and it's very competitive. I'm sure there were a lot of people who applied, and people find a lot of value in that, so thank you for being there, of course. Additional board member comments? Well, I know that next weekend, we kind of run into the President's Day holiday, so I'd like to kind of remind people to drive safe and be safe. The roads are likely to be a little bit crowded, and I will be here at our work session, but then I will be flying to Washington, DC for the National Association of Counties meetings, and so I will miss our work sessions on the 23rd and the 24th. And Michael Ossie, our vice chair, will be chairing the meetings, and he will be getting together with John Peacock to go over any details on that. So, thank you for chairing in my absence, Michael, I appreciate that. Any other final board comments? Great. We'll now move on to the consent items, which are a single reading. The first item is a, I would accept a motion, is for the minutes of the regular meeting of January 27th, and the work sessions of January 12th and 19th.
I'll move to approve.
Okay, Steve, discussion?
I had, at a meeting I was not at, I just had a question. It's the meeting of January, let's see, it's on page three of the packet. So, the meeting of January 27th, and it's under the discussion of lease agreement on moving the communications center, and then there's direction for the staff to look into a co-op recycling effort with other counties, which doesn't have anything to do with that topic.
We may have had that under the wrong.
And I think it's maybe misplaced in the minutes, that's why I brought it up.
Yes, I think that is misplaced in the minutes. The discussion was really around the funding on the recycling and direction for us to look at, particularly in Basalt, more partners potentially coming to the table in the future.
But, John, if you remember, the issue came up of recycling the control boards at the town.
Oh, that's right.
Thank you. That's when I suggested that the counties form some sort of organization, that they can recycle their used equipment within the county's Colorado structure, so that's why that comment is.
Michael, thank you.
Very good.
I jumped in there too quickly in the direction, so let me embarrassingly step back. Thank you.
So, maybe?
Yeah, the direction was for me to work with my peers through the Association of Colorado County Administrators to explore the possibility of a co-op, when we have either surplus or one more game ready to move equipment out like this that other communities may be able to use. So, thank you, Michael, I apologize.
Perhaps a couple words should be added to, for recycling used communications equipment or?
Well, it's anything. It could be a truck.
It was a more general discussion, yeah, whether it be desks, or computers, or equipment. I think the consoles were an example that brought the discussion forward, as is there an opportunity when these things come up to recycle, and how do you have those discussions?
Okay. Well, thanks for that clarification, and that totally makes sense to me.
Good call, Michael.
Okay, so, we have a motion and a second, and we don't really need any further correction on that. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Okay. And next, consent item is a public hearing, and this is its second reading. This item is Brian Peavitt for the ordinance accepting the quick claim deed from Colorado Department of Transportation for Owl Creek Road. As has been presented to us before, it was determined during some of the airport work that the deeds transferred for the Owl Creek Road would never transfer to us during the last Basalt to Buttermouth project, I guess would be the best way to frame that. I will open the public hearing. Is there anyone here to comment on this item? There being none, I will close the public hearing, and, board, does anyone have a motion?
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Steve?
I had a question that I think Brian could answer.
Well, TDR is here as well, so.
I wasn't here at the, you know, when this went through the first reading, but on the map that we're provided with, it shows, I can see clearly the Owl Creek portion outlined in green, but then there's another portion down by Highway 82 that's also outlined in green. Is that another parcel of land that is part of this same exchange?
I believe that that's part of the CEDOT right-of-way. It was condemned as part of this property, but it isn't being transferred to the county, so this is part of Highway 82's section.
Okay, so that, that one by Highway 82 is remaining part of CEDOT?
That's correct.
Okay. That's all, that's the only question I had.
Thank you. Any other board member discussions? Seeing none, I will call the question. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you. Any other?
Thank you, Brian.
No? Thank you very much. We're now going to move forward with individual consideration items. This is a public hearing, there's only one reading, and it's the application for a special event liquor permit submitted by Compass Lifelong Discovery, also the Aspen Community School, also known as.
Hi there. Hi. Jeanette Jones, Deputy County Clerk, and I have with me today Jennifer Butler from the Aspen Community School.
Yes.
Okay. And they're applying for a special event liquor permit for their event to be held at the Cozy Point Ranch this Saturday. It's an annual event. This is their third request for a special event liquor permit. We've never had any issues, and they're very good applicants to work with, and I'll turn it over to Jennifer to give her a little time to explain to you what the event's all about, and maybe where we could get tickets, and all that kind of stuff.
So, I sit on the Compass board, which governs both the Aspen and the Carbondale Community Schools, and this is a joint fundraiser between the two schools. And so, basically, the community school is part of the Aspen School District, but we receive a certain amount of funding per child, which is about thirteen hundred dollars below what the cost of educating a child at the community school actually is, and so we rely on fundraising to make up the deficit. And so, this is our third annual family hoedown at the Cozy Point Ranch, so we have a silent auction, and we have activities for kids ranging from ages three up till twelve. We do have a bar there with tip-certified bartenders serving alcohol, beer, wine, and non-alcoholic beverages. It runs from three to seven on this coming Saturday, and it's a great event. We have people from Glenwood Springs all the way up to Aspen, both out-of-town and in-town guests. We expect to have about three hundred people, and we would like to have a liquor permit so that we can have a cash bar and raise more money to help our two schools.
Yeah, you know, I wanted to just kind of raise something that's somewhat separate from this application in front of us, but it's something the board has noted in the past, it's really awkward when these get to us literally a few days before the event. And if we were the ones to say no, we're the bad guys all of a sudden, and again, this event has gone off really well, and this is kind of a separate comment to this event, but just out of curiosity, when was the application first submitted?
Well, we, I was misled with some information, so the way, and it's a little bit misconstrued on the website as well, about whether you need to get a special event permit before you can apply for the liquor permit. So, I applied for my special event permit November 15th. And so, there was a big lag time, and Jeanette and I have spoken about it, and she and Mike Kramer are going to get together and work on the verbiage of the website a little bit better, so that it's a little clearer about which, what's kind of the protocol and the chain of command, and what you have to get first. And Jeanette has been a wonderful support for me in this, and I do apologize that we're coming to you in the eleventh hour.
Again, it's not specific to yours, it's my own recognition that there is a little bit of a challenge, and I thought by you illuminating for us, we could make the internal notes to try to correct this procedure. But again, nothing having to do with your event, I just wanted to note that, because it's the type of thing we're trying to streamline and clean up our processes.
Definitely. Well, Jeanette's been a wonderful help in this process for me, so.
We really appreciate it.
I think she's got her, her eyes on making it a little bit more clear for the.
And typically, that is the issue, so Mike and I are working together on that issue and.
Okay, great. Board member questions about the application?
Now, did I miss it? Did you say where we could get the tickets, how much they are?
So, the tickets are, they're twenty-five dollars for adults, they're fifteen dollars for children from three to twelve, so under three is free, three and under, or, under three is free, and that includes your entry, all the activities, and it includes non-alcoholic beverage and dinner provided by Smoke. There's a live bluegrass band, and so the tickets are www.familyhoedown.org, and so I invite any of you that like to participate in a good old community hoedown, or have kids, to come on down and join us. We'll have a wonderful silent auction. The community's very, from, like I said, from Glenwood to Aspen, has been very supportive of this event, so there's wonderful things donated, both for the silent auction, and people have donated their time to man certain activities at the event, free of charge, so it's a real nice community effort.
That's great.
And tickets at the door?
Tickets at the door as well, correct.
Okay. Board members, any further questions? Steve?
Well, just a comment, as a former teacher at CCS and volunteer parent at ACS for a couple of years, I'm very familiar with the schools. And I've recently started doing a private event at the Carbondale Community School, and it brought back this flood of memories about what a great school it is. But I do remember, we were always struggling to raise money for, to keep the great programs at the school going.
Yeah.
And so, I know the Hoedown's been a pretty successful event for Compass, and I would urge the public to really support this.
Yeah, it's great, and our intention for this event was really twofold. One was to obviously raise money, and number two was to have, you know, this kind of synergy and cross-pollination between the two community schools. Compass is, like I said, the umbrella that governs both schools, but it's been really nice, as an ACS parent and a Compass board member, to be working closely with Carbondale, so that's nice, too, to bring two schools' worth of students and educators together, so.
And I would, I would move to approve.
Well, you can now, but I still have to open the public hearing.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Is anyone here from the public who would like to comment on this item? There being none, Steve, please back.
I'd move to approve the application for a special event liquor permit for Compass, for lifelong discovery event at Cozy Point Ranch.
I'll second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded. Any further board discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much for coming today.
Thank you very much for participating.
Really appreciate it.
Thank you for all your help, Jeanette.
Sure. I'll get that to you.
Okay. We are now going to move forward with some first readings of items that will have their public hearing on February 24th. The first item is a resolution accepting a design assistance grant from Core for a solar feasibility study. GR Fielding, please take it away.
Thank you, Rachel. Again, I'm GR Fielding, I'm the county engineer for Picken County. Before you today is a resolution. It's for a grant for twelve thousand dollars. The county is going to be kicking matching funds into this feasibility study for up to twelve thousand dollars. That money is coming out of the strategic initiatives of the board's budget. Right now, we are in the middle of doing this feasibility study, and we are eyeing April for a work session to present to the board the options, and to get some more further direction on what we're looking for, or looking at. The feasibility study is really looking at three different options that we have right now. One being a power purchase agreement. The board might be familiar with what Eagle County and Rafter has recently done with Clean Energy Collective, and buying into a solar farm. That's one option that we have. Unfortunately, the, right now, the, that portion of the industry in our valley is possibly going through some changes, and so we're taking a look at that, and that's going to be part of this report that's coming back in April. We also have a couple opportunities for rooftop. Sometimes, when we're looking at larger quantities of electricity, we don't think that rooftop can do a lot to offset, but when we have larger buildings, such as our fleet building at Public Works, and our admin building that actually have great south-facing roofs, those are going to be options that'll be lined out. We also have a couple pieces of property that we've been going out and doing some site visits with some experts in the industry to take a look at. Some of them are at the landfill, and another is at the airport. The airport obviously has a whole nother set of rules, but we are encouraged by some of the other projects that we've gone to take a look at, such as the Rifle Airport solar installation right now, and I know that there's a ton of solar installations down around DIA. And so, we'll work with airport staff and the FAA to see if there's a feasibility there. But that's about where we are with the study right now, and we are looking at April to bring those items back to the board.
Thank you for that explanation, and, you know, I recently read an article that warehouse owners in the country are some of the largest solar farms, you know, across very large warehouse districts. Board members, questions?
What was the name of the fund again that this body's coming out of? Strategic Initiative?
It's a.
Yeah, no, I just, I just want to remember the name, because we talked about it yesterday at our work session for some other thing. I just want to say to the, that's a new fund for me, and my first year of being on the board, and I think it's great that we set that up ahead of time. So, we have these issues that come back for us, we have funding available to move forward, we don't have to look for that, because I think it allows us the opportunity to pursue things that, that are part of our strategic plan. So, I think that whoever came up with that idea, I don't know what it came in to be, but I think it's a great idea, and I'm glad that we're able to utilize it, so I'm very supportive of this opportunity.
Thanks, and we're using it to fund the. And we're using it to fund the Stop Fighting and Hurts campaign this year, I believe. But was that something?
We actually budgeted for that separately this time. We got some of those initiatives started through the strategic initiative fund and built them into the budget. Right now, what we have coming out of this, pending your approval of this item today, would be the solar study and then our membership and the climate change. I've unfortunately forgotten the name of the coalition though.
Climate Coalition. Okay. Great. Thanks, GR. Other board members, questions for GR?
A comment. I noticed that part of the study would be to compare what we could do on our own properties with just purchasing, doing, purchasing something from Clean Energy Collective or some other private group who would maybe do a project elsewhere on private land or some other entity's land. But I think that would be a good comparison, because we, whatever we do, we want it to be the most cost-effective we could, and that might be the most cost-effective way to do it, to achieve our goals. But it's good that that's part of the study.
That's right, Steve. One of our greatest assets that the county has right now, especially in this market, is our real estate. And it's also one of the things that makes doing projects very cost-re prohibitive, especially in the Upper Valley right now. So those are some of the, definitely some of the things that we're looking at.
Michael or George, any questions?
Okay. I do have one question I'd like to ask. It seems like it's already fairly tightly scripted as to what will be looked at, and I'm just wondering whether, rather than always looking large and a big solar farm, are we looking, or could they even do, you know, a minor chapter on some of the smaller solar opportunities? You kind of see some really neat things happening with, on, just for one building's worth or for, you know, some areas are literally lining the sides of the roads and the Jersey barriers, and not like I'm suggesting that, are solar panels. But there's just a lot of innovation that's happening, whether it's skinning wind buildings as is happening in Germany, or the blinds that have solar panels in them that are flexible, flexible cells, and they generate when they're down and blocking the sun. And so I just want to make sure we at least begin to have the awareness of smaller solar investments that we might be able to make that offset energy issues as well. You know, sometimes it's great to go big, and sometimes you have to do bits and pieces. So this is not a public hearing. That will be set for February 24th on this item, and at least right now, I'd like a motion to see if we can take it to that public hearing.
I'd move to approve the resolution accepting a design assistance grant from Core for a solar feasibility study.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
How do you second it? Any further discussion? There being none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. That has passed. The next item is a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement with the Grand Junction Regional Dispatch Center for the provision of services of emergency medical dispatch quality assurance. I understand that this is related to kind of auditing our services.
It is. First of all, I'm Alex Burchett. I'm the Director of Operations for the Picken County Sheriff's Office. I'm also the interim Director of Communications for the Picken County Regional Emergency Dispatch Center. That's been going on for about nine weeks, and I've been drinking from a fire hose, learning all the information, so I hope that I will adequately represent this IGA to the board. First of all, I'd like to say that a lot of people think that emergency or pre-hospital emergency medical care starts when the ambulance arrives on scene, but it really doesn't. It starts from the initiation of the 911 phone call to our dispatchers, who use a process called EMD, or Emergency Medical Dispatch, to work them through a structured and internationally accepted, tested workflow that allows them to identify the chief complaint, the nature of injury or illness. Currently, we process over 800 EMD calls. We're doing 800 EMD calls per year, roughly, and providing quality assurance on those calls. And with the 14 staff, we have nine full-time employees and five trainees. It's a bit taxing right now, because of those nine full-time employees, five of them are dedicated to the trainees. So we have five full-time employees dedicated to the trainees, of which three of those full-time employees actually are qualified to do this quality assurance work. So through the IGA, what we're looking to do is partner with the Grand Junction Regional Emergency Dispatch Center to take 500 of our 800 calls a year and provide that quality assurance process for us.
And how will their response to those calls, how do we know what their response to those 500 calls was?
So we're going to set up a process where they will, essentially score the call, and then they will provide us with the feedback, whether it's an email monthly or some type of, we haven't quite nailed down that process yet, how they're going to provide that feedback to us. In my experience with technology and Google, I think it's pretty easy to set up a really streamlined method of providing that feedback to us.
So just to be clear, they're not taking the calls. They are evaluating our response to the calls. And so they'll be taking a sample of 500 of those calls.
Thanks, John.
Analyzing them, and then providing the feedback so that if we need to make improvements to our process, we can.
It's a peer review process, essentially, that we're looking to do with Grand Junction.
The calls will already be taken as.
Okay. No, it just is like when your call may be monitored. Recording for customer.
No on hold for 911.
Okay. Yeah, but that little recording comes on. George.
Alex, don't we currently also have an IGA as a backup for emergency calls with Vail or Eagle County?
So they're taking the physical call. So if our 911 lines are taxed or overrun, because we have multiple accidents in the county, our 911 lines will roll over to Vail Dispatch, and they will answer the calls. This is different in the way that John explained it. This, the call, what Grand Junction will be doing for us is reviewing a call that happened two months ago already. So it's a different process, whereas Vail will actually answer the physical 911 call for us. This is just a review of the information after the call.
And we'll, within that process, we'll know, with Vail as an example, how many calls they are actually capturing for us that are rolling over.
I believe so.
Separate process from this one, but we'll still have that information.
So, just to make sure I understand the question, for Vail, we do know the rollover when we're rolling over to Vail. Calls are never rolling over to Grand Junction as part of this agreement. This is really an agreement to do quality assurance on calls that have already happened. So two totally different processes. So yeah, we'll have a record of how many calls were analyzed by Grand Junction and the feedback that we get so that we can make any improvements we need to make to our process so that we're responding better.
Right.
Thank you.
Patty? I want to add to that. And then as part of that, we will know which of those calls that were analyzed actually rolled to Vail. So we'll know out of the 500 calls that this group of calls were actually calls that were answered by Vail, if in fact there were calls.
Steve?
Would the, once the training of the new five people being trained is completed, would our three people who are qualified to do this start taking over more of the process again?
I think so. I think there's a, Steve, it's a great question. I think the, there's a benefit to having our staff do the quality assurance, because as I think we all know, we learn from teaching, we learn from reviewing other people's product. And for our dispatchers to be able to review those EMD calls, I think is truly beneficial to them for their own personal professional experience. Long-term, I think, yes. I think the answer to your question is yes. Right now, it's a time crunch with the three that are trained to do it. They're focusing other places.
So that's why this is just for.
Just a one-year with the option.
Beyond the one year, perhaps it could be extended for on an as-needed basis or something to that effect.
Could be.
If we ever get in a personnel crunch again.
Sure. Yeah, we have a tremendous working relationship with Grand Junction, and so definitely.
Additional board questions? There will be a public hearing on this on February 24th. We will be voting to move it towards that date. Is there a motion?
No motion.
Michael has moved. Who is second?
I'll second. And I have a comment.
Comment, Patty?
Yeah, this is kind of outside the realm. I noticed you have a morning badge of the stripe across your badge. Did I, was there a tragedy in?
Mesa County. Deputy was shot two days ago by a 17-year-old.
Oh, gosh. How is that?
Yeah.
All right. Well, thank you for honoring.
Thank you. Thanks for bringing it up. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Patty. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I guess we'll see you in two weeks.
See you in two weeks.
The next items are public hearings and second readings of items which we have discussed before, but we will introduce and discuss them a little bit again. The first is the intergovernmental agreement with the Northwest Council, Northwest Colorado Regional Collaboration Shared Regional Eligibility Technician. There we go. That was a good one.
Easy, right? It's a membrane. I did not come up with that title. My name is Nan Sandin. I'm the Health and Human Services Director, and this is second reading on really what it is, is a shared public assistance eligibility technician that is housed in Garfield County that will serve two functions. One is to take overflow applications that the Northwest counties can't manage to keep them moving in a timely basis, and the second is to help train new eligibility technicians with real-life cases from counties. So this is an agreement really with Rio Blanco, Moffitt, Route, Grand Jackson, Summit, Lake, Eagle, Garfield, and Picken.
Yay.
Ten of us. And this is really only an agreement until June, the end of June, at which point we expect to get more dollars infused by both the state and Medicaid. The only change that you all required after first reading was a change in the resolution that allows me to sign this IGA as long as the county manager approves it and it's within the budget and other requirements. So John will need to approve it. If there's anything in the future, we would decide whether we need to bring it back. Is it big enough? Is it a change in scope? Is there anything other than giving you updates in our Board of Social Services meetings about it? So that's, so you'll see the language that Johnny Lee wrote in the resolution now, in the now, therefore.
Okay. John, do you have anything to add to that?
No. I think as I explained to you before, it's a way for us to work where there's minor changes that we may need to act on quickly in our agreements. It's kind of unique to our Home Rule Charter that those would come back for a two-read change versus staff signing off, which is what the other counties are doing. So this is our way to make sure any substantive changes to the IGA, we respect the charter language and bring those back to the board, but allow any agreements for implementation of that IGA or agreement to be executed at the staff level.
Board members, questions or comments?
Comment.
Steve?
Well, I had noticed that all the other people on the signature page are all their directors of their departments, and so it made sense to me to have you also be the one who could sign it just to, I would, I think, expedite the procedure. Given our Home Rule Charter, I can see that we have to do things differently sometimes.
It's always a little confusing, because prior to this agreement, we had a memorandum of understanding, an MOU, where there were no funds transferred that I could sign. And so it's always, you know, a little dicey, who signs what, but we'll keep trying to work it out, and this is, this will be really helpful to allow me and John Peacock to expedite this agreement.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Are there any members of the public here to discuss this item? There being none, I will close that public hearing and bring it back to the board.
I will make a motion to approve an intergovernmental agreement between Northwest Colorado Regional Collaboration Shared Regional Eligibility Technician. I just had to say.
Fun. Just beginning to cool the tongue.
Moved by Patty and seconded by Michael Owsley. Any further discussion? None? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Nan.
Thank you. Thank you, Nan. Okay. The next is an ordinance approving execution of a lease agreement with the Aspen Fire Protection District for the purpose of housing the Picken County Communication Center at the Airport Business Center Fire District location.
Thank you, Rachel. And this item is related to our project to both remodel and expand the building that we're sitting in. As part of that project planning, we determined two things. One, that during construction, we would need to relocate the communications and dispatch center because of the disruption that will be caused by the project, both from the perspective of noise, but also we'll be doing utility relocates and such that present the possibility of interruption of 911 and dispatch services. We also determined that from a long-term perspective, right now, the communications and dispatch center is located in the jail. The jail is, we're starting to see glimpses of reaching capacity there, and that tends to be the most expensive square footage that a county builds. And so we identified that space for future expansion of jail capacity, and it's convenient because it's already connected to the jail and is easy to do. And so we looked at a longer-term solution for relocation of the dispatch center. We were able to negotiate an agreement with the Aspen Fire Protection District to use the top floor of the North Forty Fire Station for that purpose. The lease terms that we're asking the board to authorize execution of is for a 10-year term beginning February 10th, which would be tomorrow, 2016 through February 9th, 2026. The lease premise is approximately 2,900 square feet.
You said 2026?
2026. 2016 to 2026 for a 10-year term. The lease premise will be approximately 2,900 square feet. We're still working with our architectural drawings, be plus and minus that by tens of square feet, I believe. The initial base rent will be $1481 a square foot with an annual escalation built in based on Denver Boulder Greeley CPI. We, you know, I have a few details to finish working out, but the basic terms of the lease are set. Most of it has to do with just finalizing the physical improvements and such that need to be made as part of this transition. So I will end my presentation there and entertain any questions.
Okay. Any questions for John from the board? Okay. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here to comment on the ordinance approving the execution of a lease agreement with the Aspen Fire Protection District for the purpose of housing the Picken County Communication Center? There being no public comment, I will close that public comment section, return it to the board for a motion.
I would move to approve. Second.
Okay. It has been moved by George and seconded by Michael. Is there any further discussion? There being none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed? Okay, there are none.
Yay.
Thank you very much. We are now going to move forward with the ordinance approving the Coal Creek Schumacher Property Acquisition Discussion. This has been continued from December and early January and mid-January, so we're hoping we can get a little closure on this one way or the other today. Thank you very much. Okay. And is this a copy from me, or is your copy?
That's for you. I'm sure Dale will get into this, but basically, we have some additional recommended language, and I wanted you to have it in front of you.
Okay. I appreciate that.
How about all of us?
Yeah, I know.
So I tried to print it on, but I only got three copies printed.
Okay. Maybe you could email it to us or email it to someone to be able to make some more copies.
You want to make some copies?
Yeah. Get you some copies.
Okay. Thank you, Laura. Michael, if you'd like to look at that for now, because I'm sure we'll have some discussion going forward. Dale, please start.
Well, thank you, Rachel. My name is Dale Will. I'm Director of Picken County Open Space. I'm here with Matt Adelletti, who is our Acquisition Manager. And as you mentioned, this is an item that's been in front of us a few times, and it's a proposed purchase of property by the county for open space purposes. Two lots that are up in Redstone, and on the map we have up here, you can see that the county already owns the land that's in the bright green. That's the Coke Ovens property. And not shown here, but significantly, the county owns a whole system of open space properties in the Redstone area. You can just see the Redstone Bridge here. So the Redstone Inn sits here, and the whole village of Redstone is just across the way here. It's property that the Open Space Board feels would make a nice addition to the county's open space portfolio. And some of its features, it has almost a mile of Coal Creek with it and beautiful meadows. It's one of the rare pieces of flat ground in the, relatively flat ground in the Crystal Valley. And consequently, has been used and will make a nice place in the future for events such as Nordic skiing, or I think they had dog sled races up there for a while. And has been the home of the Redstone Stables. So we've been working on this acquisition for some time. The trouble has been in regard to a covenant that was discovered on one of the two lots, on Lot 11. And we've been seeking clarification that if we go forward with this purchase, it will be clear to us what sorts of public uses will be allowed on Lot 11. We've come up with an approach to proceed that would essentially involve a closing in the near term on Lot 10 and an escrow agreement on Lot 11. There's been some continuing discussion about what specifically should be included in the escrow agreement. We're not done with that discussion. There was an agreement that was put together by the Sellers Council that was delivered to us about a week ago. And hopefully, that has created a platform to move forward. On that basis, we've discussed it and the staff is recommending that we proceed to go forward with approval of the ordinance on, this would be the second reading. It's the fourth second reading, but with a small tweak to the ordinance, which simply clarifies that the package deal going forward is contingent upon finishing the discussions on this escrow agreement and finding an acceptable way to meet both the seller's needs and the buyer's needs. So to that end, do you want me to read this out loud?
Sure.
The staff is recommending that we, and then the ordinance that's been in front of you a few times, to add language at the top of the "therefore now be ordained" clause that provided that prior to the execution of the contract and any other documents needed to consummate this transaction by the Chair or her designee, that an appropriate escrow agreement shall be executed by all parties to the transaction, which shall be first approved as deformed by the county attorney and county manager. And if no appropriate escrow agreement is executed by all parties to the transaction, the contract shall be terminated and all earnest money returned. So pretty straightforward sort of contract language. It takes a while to read it, but it essentially means that if we can reach an agreement on this escrow agreement that's been passed back and forth in draft form, that we will then proceed with this transaction on these two lots with a closing on Lot 10 in the near term and escrowing of the elements of the transaction on Lot 11 while the final status of this covenant is determined.
I think George and I are probably thinking the same thing, but you go ahead first if you'd like.
Well, it seems like, based on the board's discussion yesterday, we won't get into that because it was exact. But in terms of the approval by the form, I think it should also include the BLCC Chair.
Okay.
That's the approval of the escrow, I mean, of the escrow.
Yeah. The approval should be by, I think that's redundant, but it's okay. I do not believe our manager or attorney will move forward without our approval of the board and the Chair. But I fail safe, we could add that.
We can add it. The way this actually speaks now is that the execution by the escrow agreement would need to be done by the Chair or the designee. The form has to be approved by the county manager and the county attorney. I don't think that the Chair would approve and sign unless they approved the form as well.
Okay. What I was actually looking at was, this doesn't seem to make a separation between Lot 10 and Lot 11 because it's my impression that we're going to go ahead and close on the lower lot. And by saying that if no appropriate escrow agreement is executed by all the parties to the transaction, the contract shall be terminated and all earnest money is returned, it's kind of referring to both lots. And our intent is that it refer strictly to the upper lot. It's my impression. Now Dale, go ahead.
Well, it's a little bit intricate to say all that in one paragraph. But the intention, as I understand, and I think this works for us, is that we've got two contracts today that are linked with a clause that says you don't have to close on one unless you're set to close on the other one. Where we're trying to go with all this, and it can be filled out in more detail in the escrow agreement itself, I guess, but would be to say that once we are assured of a closing on Lot 11 through some mechanism, then we'll go ahead and close on Lot 10. So that satisfies the language of our current contract. And I can certainly work with Laura and John to make sure that that intent is reflected in all the documents that control the transaction.
Okay. Yeah. And I can see what you're saying. And so I'm just trying to get a little self-assurance on this. But as it says, "And if no appropriate escrow agreement is executed by the parties to the transaction, the contract for both lots will be terminated?"
Technically, I think it'd be more accurate to put plural on that clause because we do have two separate contracts for this.
We can take direction from the board. If you only want to close on 10 regardless of what happens with 11, we can modify that. But the limiting factor on that is that the contracts right now are contingent.
Right. And it's been the recommendation of the Open Space Board that they don't want to close on one unless their eventual closing on the other one has been assured. So I think we can do all this with the small change that you just outlined and...
Of adding an S behind the word contracts.
Yes.
Okay. First, we're going to need a motion to amend this language to add the word "S" and then include it in the resolution that we have in our packet. Okay.
Seconded.
It is removed and seconded. This is not voting on the final question, just to get our resolution in line. All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Now we'll get back to discussing the larger issue of the acquisition.
I don't have a lot more to say about it other than that I personally find this property to make an excellent candidate for open space. It complements everything that we're doing around the county and in Redstone. Tim McFlynn, one of our trustees, has described it as the North Star of Redstone, and it does have some of that flavor. It's relatively flat. It's a place where members of the public could go have a respite of some sort that isn't climbing up the side of a canyon, which is otherwise pretty much what you have to do in the Crystal Valley. So we're enthusiastic, and we recommend that you approve this ordinance. I'm aware that the representatives from the seller are here today and may have other comments.
Okay. Dale, the one other thing I would ask you and Matt is to give us and the public a conceptual idea of what the escrow account will do and what its intention is.
Sure. Well, again, the nit that we've been trying to deal with in this whole package now has been this covenant that's on Lot 11. And what it says is that Lot 11 is meant for residential uses. And it has a list of things you can't do. Well, frankly, it's ambiguous regarding public uses, whether that would be allowed or not. But we want clarification. And so therefore, the escrow agreement has one price that we'll pay if this covenant cannot be amended and have the amendment sort of sanctified by some kind of judicial imprimata. There's a price there slightly reduced from the full price that's authorized in the ordinance. The price would be $7.50 if this amendment stands the way it is, I mean, the covenant, excuse me. $7.50 if the covenant remains the way it is today. And that price goes up to the full price authorized if that covenant is amended to explicitly sanction all the things that the county would normally do with open space property.
Okay. And the lower parcel is not encumbered with the same deed restriction. And I would note that our contract states that the board approves an expenditure of up to $1.80 and transaction cost for the two lots. So it's not a requirement to spend the full $1.80. It's just up to if we cannot reach resolution on that sticking point. Right. Thank you. George?
So Dale, as you said earlier, there's currently a leasing on one of the lots. I know there's an aspiration by some Redstone residents to perhaps utilize some of the property for another opportunity venture. As with all of our open space purchases, staff will go through an open public process in terms of a management plan to determine actually what are the best uses for this particular property or properties.
Correct. Anyone that's curious about our management plans can find them on our website, which is a part of the Picking County website. But you're absolutely right. When open space acquires a property, we will first look at all of its natural resource values, whether it's got habitat or scenic values. And on the basis of that platform, then solicit public input for what the range of uses consistent with the county's charter for open space should be. We're in the midst of one of those processes right now on the Lazy Glen Open Space down at the mouth of Bione Gulch. And that's a current example, but Sky Mountain Park and North Star and Smuggler Mountain and many others, Floha Meadows, all have these adopted management plans. And we find they engage the public, and people tend to be pretty happy with the way they turn out.
Just to follow up on that, though, at essence, should the management plan promote the idea that yes, we should maintain stables here and that sort of operation, would the charter and the open space language of the original mill levy allow that sort of sublease to occur or any improvements to the stable or things like that?
Yeah. It's been our practice, well, first of all, we've got a leasing program that's set up. It's focused more on agriculture, but certainly, a lot of county open space is leased. The Emma Townsite, for example, we leased that house back out just to maintain the house. We lease a lot of our agricultural lands to agrarians. Yeah, farmers under a process that allows for competition and scoring and so on. It has been, you know, the advice I've gotten from the Attorney's Office has been improvements that are there on the date we've acquired the property are not a problem. For example, the Glacier Open Space has got that whole collection of homestead buildings and so on. The question of adding improvements is something we would have to revisit when that's, if and when that's proposed. And, you know, I'm aware of the thing that George is referring to. There is interest in adding a structure by some residents of Redstone, but I don't know what the answer to that is yet, and we don't have to solve that today.
And a structure is not necessary for a horse operation, frankly, but a lot of summer ones come up. But, okay, thank you. Any other board questions about this? I will first ask if the representatives of the applicants have any comments they would like to make and then open the public hearing for other general comments. Is there anyone from the applicant who would care to speak?
Seller.
Seller.
I saw you question.
I would just like to say thank you.
And just identify yourself for the record.
Tim Cottrell with Subby's, and I represent Lee Schumacher Lot 11 and Judy Schumacher on Lot 10. It's interesting. It notes that we've extended this since '12 of '15. It's actually more like '12 of '14. So it's great to be at this second reading. We really appreciate that. I want to really say how much we appreciate the efforts of both Dale and Matt and the Open Space Board on getting this. It's been a little thorny, and I think we're very much there. And to that, I would just like to encourage that this process, now that we're here, get completed as timely as possible. Because this little caveat that I think you discussed, don't really know the details of that yesterday. We should be easily through that process. And we are currently under a, the latest iteration of our amend extends to close on March 3rd.
3rd, correct.
3rd.
For Lot 10.
Well, for, for both, really. So, and there should be plenty of time between now and then to have this latest flex to the amendment taken care of. And we just encourage that to move along as expeditiously as possible. So I appreciate that.
Thank you for your comment.
Okay.
Any members of the public who would care to comment on this item? There being none, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to a vote from the board. We have already amended the actual resolution in our package to include the new language that Laura has provided us. And so either discussion or a motion. Board?
I would make a motion to approve. Second.
Okay. The contract is amended and...
I just want to comment. I just want to thank everybody for their patience on this one. I might have not been here in 2014, but I've sat through a lot of them in 2015 and now 2016. So I think it's a great amenity to the Redstone area, to the whole valley, the Crystal Valley. It's a beautiful parcel. I have actually been up, when we did the opening of the park, I went up and toured it and drove all the way up there. It's gorgeous. I think the public will truly enjoy it. So I agree with Tim Cottrell that we need to wrap it up for its finality and move forward. So thanks, everybody, for their patience.
Thank you. I would only comment, I agree with everything you said, Patty. And the parcel in many ways stands on its own. It's unfortunate we were not able to see this resolved sooner. So we could consider different ways in which the properties could contribute to water quality and water health in that area. I don't know if there may be a further opportunity later, but as you said, there are a great many other values related to these two parcels that I'd like to secure. That being said, any other board member comments? Thanks again, Tim, and to the owners, and thanks, Matt and Dale, for working on this. All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion is carried.
Thank you.
Thanks, Pat.
Thank you. Let's see. The next item, yeah, starts to get into a larger land use discussion. I'm going to call a 10-minute recess so that we can have staff set up, take a little break, and then we will start into the longer land use items. Thank you. We are going to reverse that order. Thank you, Lance, for that suggestion. So Joanna, I think you're presenting this. Might you take that away?
Yeah. Hi. So I'm Joanna Shapna with ComDeb. On December 2nd, the board met to review Sunset provision for floor area height setback and growth management allowances when residences are constructed in compliance with Plan C regulations, which is for handicap accessibility. And the board directed staff to prepare an ordinance to revoke and repeal the Sunset provision. And we're here in the first reading of that ordinance.
Actually, okay.
It shows as a public hearing because I put it on the agenda as a public hearing. The official notice public hearing will be its second reading on February 24th.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification, Lance. It didn't look right. Okay. Board member questions on this item? Steve?
Joanna, is that section of the Land Use Code 5-20-70K5, does that just deal with the Sunset provision?
Yes.
Like a one, is it a one-sentence thing?
It's a little paragraph.
Since we don't have that in front of us that you can read in.
I can read it to you, but it gives us...
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that there was nothing else in that section besides the Sunset.
Okay. So we'll include that in our package for the second reading. Other board member questions? There being none, this is not a public hearing. Is there a motion to approve this item on first reading and set for a public hearing at our next meeting?
February 24th.
Thank you. Michael has moved. Give this one to Steve. Patty's already gotten a few. Steve has seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? There are none. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
And we will now move on to the next item. And thank you to the other applicants for your patience on that. We appreciate it.
So we're going to move this one on, just as sufficiently as.
Yeah. So we are now going on to the Lot 20 Little Cloud LLC Site Plan Review and Major Amendments to Development Permit.
I know this is one of your favorite things, but I don't know if you have been receiving the letters that have come in recently.
I know we have had a tough send to us by Susan Murphy this morning and otherwise.
Okay, I think she's been, yeah, forwarding things. There were letters, two letter, well, one letter arrived late yesterday after I left work, so it didn't get forwarded until this morning, and then another. So I did make paper copies. I'll just have you guys.
This one has like five attachments to it, so it's kind of.
Yeah, I made all the attachments. So there's a letter from the Lyle Reader Trust, there's a letter from Matt Ferguson, and a letter from Bart Johnson with the, those attachments.
Okay, let's go ahead and break those out and hand them out to everybody.
Sorry, I should have done that during break, but I guess if you want to send those around. I have eight copies. I'll cover.
Looking like a little reading the room.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Here we go. One more.
Is your foot in?
It's always a little hard when we get attachments like mid-meeting.
So, yeah, three, the three different letters. So Rachel, did you just want me to go ahead and proceed with standard?
Yeah, I think so. I have a feeling we're going to hear some of these arguments orally as well between the two.
I don't know if you want to address any of that first or go ahead with this, so.
Okay.
So just to orient everyone, I pulled up the map behind you. We may need to bring down the lights first, I think, just so we can, because I know that's hard for me to read. So I think you're all familiar with the property. At the end of Second Street, this is 333 South Second Street. This was, property that was owned by Lyle Reader for many years, then passed into his trust when he passed away, and then was sold 2014?
Yeah.
To the current owners. Does that sound right? And so just to orient you, this, this big line, and I can pull that off of the map, is the, is the city-county boundary. It does obscure some of that, so I can remove that just so you can see a little better. But just so you know, that line is running through there. So we are right at the edge of the city. This is the Ice Garden. The Midland Trail is running through here. Ajax Apartment, Employee Housing Complex is right here. The Little Cloud subdivision lots wrap around this side, 43, Lot 2 and Lot 1. There's Little Cloud Trail, the road that goes into those four lots. Aspen Mountain continuing uphill from here, excuse me, from here. If you've been out recently, there is construction underway on Lot 2. So if you've been out near there, you'll, that's the construction that's occurring right now, is going on in this lot. This property's had many approvals over the years. I think Lyle's first 1041 approval was in 1991. Subsequent to that, there was, this property was larger. It encompassed what is now a portion of the trail as well as a piece of property farther down. In 1993, the county entered into an agreement and acquired portions of that property in order to complete the Midland Trail. And I'll talk more about that and the rights associated with that. But that dates back to 1993. There were various approvals after that time, getting envelope approvals, extending vested rights, not extending vested rights. So there's a lot of history, but I think really culminating in 2014, when there was a new activity envelope approval granted with vested rights, that did go through a denial first by the hearing officer due to hazards constraints on the site. And it came to the board through a takings determination, and then that approval was granted. Let's see, that was Resolution 106, 2014. That resolution, again, approved an activity envelope on the property with vested rights subject to conditions, many of which are addressed in this review today. And it repealed all of those, basically all of those prior approvals for envelopes. This was a new approval at that point in time to move forward. That approval requires the applicant to come back through our site plan review process and the application that's in front of you today. Just again, a little background on that, at the time, in 2014, based on the contract from when the county had acquired land from Mr. Reader, and his property was reduced in size, he retained certain rights. I won't read through all of that, it's in the memo, but it was specified in that resolution in 2014 as part of that approval, in terms of the opportunity to build one or two single-family residences, specified the maximum allowable floor area of 9,800 square feet, based on the original size of the parcel. And specified that, based on the original sizes of the parcels, there could be one residence of no more than 1,343 square feet, another residence of no more than 8,547 square feet of floor area. And that 5750 square feet is exempt from growth management for each residence. So on any residence, if you're going over 5750 of gross floor area, you're using TDRs or competing in growth management. So just to be clear, that 9,800 square feet is floor area. This is in the urban growth boundary, so that does not include subgrade and garage space, which are exemptions from floor area. So when I speak to gross floor area, that's the term we use to encompass floor area plus below-grade space plus garage. So that's how we differentiate those terms under the code. So let's see, in addition to the site plan request that's in front of you, the applicant is requesting an amendment to that approval specific to the distribution of the floor area. As I said, we've got about 8,500 square feet in one house and 1,300 square feet in the other. The applicant, in working on their site plan, has prepared and is presented in the application, and I'm not going to put up all the graphics, the team will go through their graphics, so I'll just speak to things and they can put their things up. They looked at designs of two houses, one at 1,300 square feet and one at 8,500 square feet. That was option one that's provided in your, in your application packet. They then prepared another set of plans, which would provide more equal, equality or balance between those two, where they looked at more of a, one residence of 3,000 square feet and one of 6,300 square feet. And that's option two. The amendment they're requesting is to allow them to pursue option two, which would change that floor area allocation or distribution between the two houses. So rather than building one larger and much smaller house, they do somewhat, you know, again, a closer distribution or just a redistribution of those two. As part of that redistribution, they've proposed to, they would reduce the floor area to 9,300 square feet. So they would eliminate 500 square feet of above-grade floor area. They would eliminate 1,000 square feet of below-grade floor area. So at the top of page four presents the numbers that are associated with these two options, again, including the below-grade and subgrade space. The difference between the two, as approved today, 19,300 square feet, with those reductions, 17,800 square feet, and it shows you how that would be distributed. Again, in the memo, I kind of go through the, what's allowed in the surrounding neighborhood? Is this compatible in terms of the sizes of the units, the 3,000 and 6,300 square feet? The Little Cloud houses are 7,100 to 10,600 square feet. There are other residences nearby in the city, range from 5,460 square feet to 7,000 square feet. So these residences are in the range of what's in the surrounding area.
Suzanne, are you talking about gross or FAR?
Those numbers, those numbers are based on the way the assessor calculates, which is different than the way we calculate floor area. So theirs is a heated space calculation. I think the main difference there is not including garage space to give it some comparison. But it includes the below-grade space. So, so again, right, there, it's just, those are the numbers. But if you wanted to try and do apples to apples, those would not include garage space.
Can you run through those numbers one more time, then?
So, right, Little Cloud is 7,100 square feet to 10,600 square feet heated area by the assessor.
Okay.
The city lots, you know, again, we're looking, the city lots that are nearby range in size, lot size, from about 12,000, close to 13,000 square feet to close to 19,000 square feet. So smaller sized lots than this is, but they, let's see, the north side, range from 5,460 square feet to 7,000 square feet of heated area, again, using the assessor's calculation.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, my numbers are on that first set of numbers, the 13,000 and 19,000 was the Little Cloud lot, lot sizes.
Okay.
The, the city lots are 6,000 and 9,000 square feet.
The city areas.
Sorry, yeah, that makes more sense there. I did review the Aspberry Community Plan, which did talk about trying to bring consistency between those adjacent zone districts. The city's zone district is R15, the county's zone district is R15, but we obviously have differences in what that, what that means in terms of allowable floor area and other things. That is not an implementation step that has been, has been taken since the Aspberry Community Plan. So there has not been a close look by the city and the county at this point at those two zone districts and what the, what a comparison of those would be. So in terms of response to the Aspberry Community Plan, it was identified as something to look at, it has not been looked at at this point in time. The city planning staff did not provide comments, this was referred, but they did not provide comments on the application. I did make what I would call an attempt to review their code and look at what their R15 code, you know, might allow. And so again, I will, you know, caveat this as, as my interpretation of the city land use code, which is not what I do on a daily basis. So it is R15, they would allow two single-family residences on a lot. The residences comply with the setback requirements that would be in the city on an R15 lot. It, again, it appears to me, based on the lot area, of the original lot area of 61,249 square feet, there would be allowed a floor area of 7,356 square feet for two residences. There would be a reduction due to steep slopes. They'd reduce floor area based on steep slopes, where we, as in the county code, we only do a density reduction, so it only applies during subdivision. So with that slope reduction, they'd be at about 5,500 square feet for two residences in the city.
I mean, each resident could be 51, but.
Two residences.
31.
Combined. There would be exempt square footage for a garage, 375 versus the 750 that we do in the county. And here's where I'd say I really don't know if I'm close or not, but it appears that, to me, there would be exempt below-grade space, as long as there's no exposed exterior surface wall area, is the rule in the city. I think based on the way this is designed, it would be complying with the city, what the city would allow for below-grade. So again, my, my interpretation was that they would be allowed the below-grade space that the county code is allowing within.
Patty, and it's my understanding the city code now allows for just one level of subgrade space, below-grade space?
That is my understanding, but.
In other words, you can't keep going and go.
You can keep going, but if you go more than, I believe it's 15 feet below grade, you, it counts.
In the city code.
So it's not that you can't do a double base.
It just counts as your FAR.
It counts as floor area.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Patty.
So.
And you guys have a similar provision. I think yours is 20.
And I think George has a follow-up question before we go further.
Well, I'm just curious, Suzanne, I mean, it's all interesting in terms of the difference between city and county code, but, but in all due respect of the city, this is a county issue?
Yeah.
And we have our own code and.
I agree, George. I think, you know, I felt it was worth putting in here because I figured the question could be asked. What is the comparison to the city?
And the compatibility in the neighborhood?
The compatibility, right. But clearly, you know, I think, you know, right, you can play with the numbers, and I don't know if I've gotten them right or not. I think the city overall would allow less square footage on the property. But, but this isn't, right, it's not in the city and it's subject to the approvals that have been granted.
Yeah, because they also have different criteria in terms of how they utilize TDR for the city versus the county.
As well as housing mitigation or, yeah, a lot of issues.
Right. So, so it's just to put, put it out there in terms of, if anyone had the question of what is the comparison.
Suzanne, that, I think that's a good point. Thank you, George, for raising. I have one question before you keep going, because we're on this neighborhood thing. But is this area here developed, is that a separate lot from the subdivision of Little Cloud?
That is.
Or is it just open space?
That is, that's Little Cloud Park.
Okay.
So as you continue down the trail, you go up, the Little Cloud Trail is up in here, so that would be, I can. Make sure I'm saying it right. It's not showing, but this is. It's city and Asperry property.
Okay.
Just to make sure.
I just was trying to determine if there were any larger homes kind of along that area.
No, right, in this, you know, nothing above, above the trail, so that's city property. This is Little Cloud Open Space as part of the Little Cloud subdivision. And then.
And this lot of Little Cloud, that is already developed in separate ownership?
Yes.
Okay. And what size is that specifically?
Do you know, would that be?
It's in the range of 7,500 square meter floor area plus.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks, that was my question.
Yeah, what exhibit was that?
12.
Exhibit 12 in their application did put in the various square footages for those surrounding Little Cloud lots.
So that's, that one's 9,300.
So that the one that's built up there is 9,300, there's an unbuilt lot at 9,500. The one that's under construction now, Lot 2, you're showing it at 10,000.
10,5, no, 10,6.
10,6 of the right gross floor area. Okay, so back to, again, this request to redistribute the floor area. There are comments in the, in the, in the packet from the Ajax Apartments Homeowners Association. They prefer option one, which would be the current approval at 1,300 and 8,500 approximately square feet. They find it more consistent with prior approvals prior to 2014, which contemplated one single-family dwelling unit and a caretaker dwelling unit. Their request was that the two residences be required to share a deed. They had a concern about extensive glass facades. But in terms of, in terms of the redistribution of the floor area, they felt it was more appropriate to have the, one larger house and the smaller house. Staff agreed with the applicant and supported the option two, so the 3,000 and 6,300, as it does put more of the mass and bulk of House Number 2. So here I can, do you want to see, want me to put up the site plan now?
I think so.
It'll show you just the two houses. So just as, since I refer to them, here's House Number 2 or Home Number 2, Home Number 1, coming in from Second Street, I don't know if it's really helpful, coming in from Second Street here. This is the driveway, the trail. So Home Number 2, again, here's that Lot 2, Little Cloud. So Home Number 2 here, Home Number 1 here. So what we preferred about that is that they had committed to make this garage a one-level structure and push the bulk of the house further back into the lot, so more. more, there's more of the height is back here. This leaves a lower mass closer to the trail for this house, for, for house number two. Again, this, as part of option number two, does have that 1,500 square foot reduction of the gross floor area, so it does provide for less total gross floor area than, than option one would. So we agreed with the applicant that the proposed amendment to redistribute the floor area would achieve a better fit between the size of the new residences and the size of the surrounding residences in the neighborhood. That, it doesn't change the use of the property, it doesn't significantly change the character or appearance of the property. Again, we're, we're talking in either scenario, two residences on the lot. It will reduce the gross floor area, would not increase offsite impacts. Again, they're sharing a driveway and, and again, there will be two, either way, there will be two residences. So, so we agreed and supported their proposal to redistribute that floor area. But again, that is part of their request to you, is to amend that approval to allow that redistribution. They've also asked for a couple of amendments to their envelopes, which really relate to actual development of the lot. There's a geo hazard envelope that runs along the top of the property. They've proposed a change to that to allow for not only their rockfall mitigation geobrute fence that would come in here, but also a drainage structure that would run along the top of, of the property. So this envelope would come all the way to the property line over here. That would accommodate those structures as well as sort of the grading and landscaping to, to mitigate for those in there. And then the other proposal is to establish a landscape envelope along that eastern property line, which is in here. The envelope at this point stops here, so they've asked to extend this into this area so they can landscape adjacent to Lot 2. Also provides them a little more area in here for some parking going up to the, to the property line. So again, I think those are pretty minor changes to, to the activity envelope and in particular, the changes to this envelope up here are sort of necessary, given the need to provide the mitigation necessary above the residents for that rockfall and, and for the drainage structure.
Suzanne, on the home number one, where is the parking for that? And it seems like a lot of empty area that, having cars right adjacent to the trail.
There is a, there's a, basically a privacy wall in here, but they will, everything will come into the property. There are garages in both buildings, so there's two car garages in each, for each residence.
Okay.
And then in addition, they're providing for a, basically additional parking spaces in these areas. But those cars, you know, they are proposing a privacy fence along the trail, so those cars won't be parked next to the trail, but they'd be on the other side of, of that fence.
And the other one question is on the drainage proposal, where would it drain to?
It's, it's sending the drainage around to this side of the house. And it may be appropriate, I mean, they have all of their technical folks here, it might, you might want to just have them do a better explanation of that. But, but sure, it's, short, short answer is it's sending the drainage over to here such that it will then drain out to Second Street. And that's, I mean, they, they, they have a whole system designed to, to address that, but I think they can better speak to that.
Okay, 'cause that's the one where I would be concerned, that it's, you know, draining basically to the city stormwater runoff system, and you constantly hear them wanting to upgrade and improve that system that is somewhat inadequate now. And it makes me think about what we heard repeatedly during the celestial hearings, that you can't build something that then pushes, whether it's a debris flow or other water problems onto another property. So I definitely want more information about that. Michael, you have a question?
So just help me, help me with this, there were, there were two lots?
Originally, historically?
Historically.
Right, there was one very small parcel, about 8,000 square feet, located, with separate parcel, separate development, right, located down towards Coke, you know, Lumber Park, the volleyball park. So basically, there was a strip of land that ran along the trail, what we now know as the trail or the Midland right of way, that was part of this property. And then there was a separate parcel, triangular shaped parcel.
Suzanne?
Do you have that?
Great.
So that yellow piece is that separate parcel.
And that's the parcel, no, so, so then how do we get two houses then on this one parcel? Walk me through that.
The, the agreement between the county and Lyle Reader at the time, reserved the development rights associated with the property as it existed at that time. It, the property included these two separate parcels, so the triangular piece as a separate parcel, and then all of this as a parcel. So when we determined that this had a development right at, based on R-15 zoning and 8,000 something square foot lot, it was eligible for 1,343 square feet of floor area. That's where that number comes from. This lot, based on its original lot area, which was 50 something square feet, I don't have that number on the top of my head, allowed for the 8,500 and something square feet of floor area.
So then in the reservation of that development right, parcel B, that was, that development right was then moved to this remaining parcel.
Correct.
And so that's what we have today.
Right, that's why we have one parcel with the right to develop two residences on it. Rather than, at the time, before this had occurred, there would have been a residence here and a residence here.
And so, so the applicant is taking the, the sum of those development rights and somehow changing the ratio?
They have outright, so their request is to say, well, we have these rights today based on, as memorialized in the 2014 approval, but we're asking you, as an amendment to our approval, which is at, at your discretion, to, rather than limit, you know, leave it at those specific square footages based on the original sizes of these parcels, to allow them to redistribute that.
So they're aggregating those development square footages essentially in the.
Right, there's, right, they're saying, we're allowed a total of 9,800 square feet right now, we've said it, it has to be this much and this much, and we'd like to make this a little larger and this a little smaller.
Okay.
That's, that's what their request is.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Suzanne, if you want to continue with your presentation and we'll get more questions.
I just have a question about water, just so you know.
Okay.
So I'll just try and quickly, so in the, in Resolution 106, 2014, there were some very specific conditions to be addressed with the site plan application, so I'll, I'll walk through those. The first related to site and structure specific rockfall mitigation. At the time, it was, we did not know when the activity envelope was approved, whether the mitigation would occur on this site, or if they would be able to do some offsite mitigation above the property. They will be doing the mitigation on site, so there is a proposed rockfall, flexible steel mesh rockfall barrier that will be installed above the house. So that. That is shown in here. Am I, am I in the wrong place?
Next line in the line.
I think I have to look, oh, okay, sorry, it's got the trees below it, sorry.
There you go.
There we go.
Yeah.
That in the line, yeah, and they, this is, these trees are planted below that.
Is that the same type of, of mitigation as the existing brujet?
Yes, it is.
The one that we know works really well?
The one that caught that.
Caught that big rock?
Yes, it is the, the same type of system.
Basically placed below the gap, so there's a gap.
And there's a maintenance agreement that goes with that.
That would be required as part of this approval, yes. So that has been reviewed by the Colorado Geological Survey and deemed acceptable mitigation. The second issue was driveway plan and profile. There's been a lot of discussion over the years about how the driveway would come across the trail. It was agreed that it would be an at grade crossing. So obviously, the, the design of the, the driveway and the trail are critical to work with the city, to make sure it, it meets their standards for the driveway. The trail will have to be regraded on either side to bring the trail down so the driveway can cross. So the applicant has worked with city engineering, city parks, and county open space and trails to address the details related to all of that. This, this is, I think, a little bit older version of, of this, just so you know. The driveway, they have worked with the city, this driveway has been slightly aligned where it comes in, but it is still in the same general location. I did mention in the, in my memo, there was a, they had made a request to amend the easement for the driveway across the trail, which was reserved when the county acquired that property. The applicant is working on the, to revise that design. They will, they will get the driveway in within the existing easement, so there will be no need to try and pursue that because that could be complicated. So anyway, so they've worked with, with all of the various parties, I think, to address their concerns and standards related to the design of the driveway and, and the trail as well. Let's see. They provide a report from an engineer regarding development on steeper slopes to ensure that slopes are stable. I think that condition has been adequately addressed. They conducted a phase one environmental site assessment to determine if any contaminated soils may be present. Based on that phase one assessment, they opted to do a phase two assessment. And there are, let's see, the lead levels are within CD-PHE standards and arsenic level is exceeded. So basically, their, their Environmental Services Incorporated presented, you know, what that would mean in terms of removal of those soils. They said the levels are not so high as to require remediation. Material is suitable for disposal at the landfill as a special waste. So again, it was just trying to identify, if there's a concern, then it's really just a management issue, not so much an issue of, then you can't develop there, it's an issue of what, what you're going to do with those soils when they're, when they are disturbed and/or moved offsite. So, so that was addressed, and they also provided an analysis regarding potential subsidence due to past mining activities. And there was basically no evidence of any underground mine workings below the property, so there wouldn't be any concern about subsidence from that perspective. So then, our, those, those were the additional requirements. Then our standard requirements in terms of the site plan review. Again, the site plan review encompasses all of the development, the two houses, the driveway, the changes to the garage, the, the rockfall barrier, all of those things are part of this, the site plan that, that is, has been presented in this application. Again, you, you made, you asked about the drainage, I think we'll have the, the applicant respond to, to some of those issues. Obviously, the Ajax Apartments people, owners have expressed some concerns about any drainage affecting them. Our standard is obviously to maintain drainage, the, the drainage that occurs off of the property now cannot be increased and it cannot impact any other neighbors. So the applicant has obviously worked with that standard in terms of designing their systems to address that. For scenic view protection review, our standard is how it's visible or viewed from Highway 82, so it's actually the view from Main Street, which is two and a half blocks away. From Main Street, I won't, I won't grab the graphic, but in the packet, there was a good, they've got that, they'll show you. From Main Street, you're really, Second Street's coming in here, you're kind of catching just this corner of, of the lot, you're really not getting a direct view of either of these two residences. So the impacts from Main Street are, are really fairly minimal. And I think they've well addressed that in their application. Given that, though, they still have addressed our scenic view protection standards and, you know, tried to, to mitigate visual impacts, obviously recognizing that there is a public trail going by here, that is not the standard they're required to meet in terms of visual impacts. But I think by, by addressing our scenic view standards, you know, they, they have looked at that, where that impact is on the trail. And I think, as I mentioned, you know, they do have this privacy wall, they have proposed to put in some landscaping along the trail where there's adequate room to do that, to try and soften that, that impact. But again, from, the view from Main Street is really fairly, fairly minimal. Let's see, I don't know if there's anything specific I need to say about landscaping. Patty, I think to your question about water, they have, they currently have a well permit issued by the state in 2003 that's limited to use, for household use in one single family dwelling, no outside uses. That was approved, the Aspen City Council back in 2003 had denied a request for city water to the, the property.
That was my question, do you know what the basis of the denial was? They just said no, or they said no because you're not in proximity to.
What year was it?
2003.
You know.
I think Alan's probably right, I think there may have been, you know, a negotiation that went on and the applicant wasn't willing to agree to some of those terms.
Generally, it is required to annex into the city to hook up the city water, so it may have been that.
So I'd have to go, go back to my files to.
There's always that stipulation of annexation, whether or not you annex, it's kind of always that nudge.
Yeah.
So that was back in 2003.
So they currently have a well right for one residence there in the process of acquiring the opportunity for two homes and landscaping water uses.
So they've applied to the state for that, and I guess I would, the applicant maybe can address that further.
Yeah, we're working with Kevin Patrick's office on that.
Water's a pretty critical issue for.
Absolutely.
So I think that's enough for me. So we've, we've recommended approval, oh, I guess to the, to the issue of, all the letters you've received. You know, the first letter that came in was from Kurt Sanders representing the owner of Lot 2, Little Cloud. That came in, just as basically we were, we were going to press with the packet last week, so there was no response to that included in the application. Obviously, several more letters have come in on that front. I know Laura's, has prepped and, you know, has, she, she's privy to all of that information and, and, you know, is prepared to, to address some of those issues. So I know you, you've seen it at the last minute, Laura saw a lot of it at the last minute too, but, but I think we're, we're prepared to respond to that, so. Otherwise, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you very much.
You had it done all right.
Alan, unless there's any other board member questions for Suzanne now, we'll turn to your presentation.
Thanks. For the record, I'm Alan Richmond, I'm here representing Lot 20, Little Cloud LLC, the applicant. I am a bit hoarse, I will do my best to, to enunciate and, and speak, but if, if you're ever in any trouble understanding, just let me know. So my team is all behind me, and I just want you to know who they are, 'cause everybody's going to speak a bit during the presentation, we're going to break it up into some bite sized pieces. So Bill Behringer is right behind me, and he's the managing partner of the LLC, the owner of the property. Also here is Matt Brown, over here. Matt is Bill's partner on the project. We've also got the project architect here, that's Zach Rockett, he's right there. And you've already had questions for the next individual, that's Derek Walter, who's sitting back there, stood up. Derek is the project engineer. And lastly, Bart Johnson is the applicant's attorney. And so we'll all have a, a role in this presentation, and we're all, all happy to answer your questions.
Alan, you can move that, that thing in front of you, that phone, telephone conference call, yeah, it's kind of.
We're not talking to anybody in Singapore or anything like that?
No.
Great. So I'd like to thank Suzanne and the staff for their thoughtful case review. We're very pleased that the staff has given this project what is a very thorough review. They've gone point by point through the resolution and found that the project complies with all the conditions of approval. They've gone through all the standards of the code, they found that it complies with the land use code, they've made a finding that it's compatible with the neighborhood. They and we believe that this project merits your approval today. I can also tell you that in terms of the conditions that are being recommended, they're acceptable. I'm not here to argue with you about conditions. That's, that's not a problem for us, the staff has been quite reasonable in, in what's been identified. So the presentation that we're going to do really has five, five small parts to it. I'll start off by setting the context for the application. You've heard the land use history, so I don't have to go through all of it, but I'm going to highlight just a little bit of it because it's so important to today's hearing. I'll then turn it over to Bill, and Bill's going to talk just a little bit about his approach to developing the property. He spent a lot of time in the last year plus since he purchased the property, talking with his neighbors, trying to respond to the issues that, that they've identified, particularly issues for neighborhood improvements, which you're going to hear a lot about. particularly issues for neighborhood improvements, which you're going to hear a lot about as part of our presentation. And there's also been an enormous amount of work with city and county departments. In particular, the city engineer, the city parks, and the county open space and trails have really been folks that we've dealt with a lot in, in building up to this, this site plan. Bill will then turn it over to Derek, and Derek will actually talk to you specifically about the public amenities and improvements that we're proposing as part of the site plan. He'll turn it back to me, and we'll talk a little bit about Option One and Option Two, which Suzanne has introduced to you. And then Zach will back clean up, and he'll review the architecture and site plan with you. So, just to get into the land use history, there are really just three key dates that I wanted to review with you, and, and you've heard about at least two of them already from Suzanne. So the first one actually is, is five years before when, when Suzanne started. It's 1986. Suzanne, can you just throw that on the? I had it in my file, and it's such a neat picture that, since Lyle can't be in the room in person, at least his picture can be in the room. So that's a 1985 Aspen Times article saying that the, the deal for Hunter Creek had been consummated. It actually got completed in 1986 with a land exchange with the Forest Service. And at the time, Lyle owned 115 acres of patented mining claims in Van Horn Park in the Hunter Creek Valley, and he also owned nine acres above Ashcroft. Back in the mid-1980s, when this happened, there was no such thing as rural and remote zoning. So Van Horn Park was zoned AF1, which is your 10-acre zone district. And the 115 acres would have allowed up to 11 residences to be built. I was just looking at the article, and right there, under Lyle, there's mention of an environmental assessment being conducted by the Forest Service for the exchange, stating that the land contains big-game migration routes, elk calving areas, which are probably our two most sensitive wildlife habitats, as well as summer range for deer and elk. So this was really important land, and there's a statement in the, in the article that, you know, we're eliminating the threat of development in the, the Hunter Creek Valley by this exchange. So Lyle traded that land to the Forest Service. He extinguished the threat of development on 115 acres of inholdings, and in exchange, he got the 1.2 acre government Lot 20. So just as we suggested to you a couple of years ago when you were doing the takings hearing on, on this property, we really would ask you to keep in mind the fact that this land has become a development site some 30 years ago because of this exchange. And there was particularly important land protected in perpetuity for the public in return for a, a decision by the government to allow residential development to occur on this parcel. And on balance, I think we would all agree that having development on land adjacent to Aspen where development should occur makes a whole lot more sense than up to 11 residences in Van Horn Park. So that's 1986, 1993. Suzanne has already mentioned, of course, the contract whereby Mr. Reader sold and donated more than a third of the 60-plus thousand acres of, 60,000 square feet, excuse me, of land that he owned to the county for the Midland Trail. The board approved the subdivision exemption, creating this parcel for development. And so that was the second time that the public benefited from the ongoing land development activities associated with this property. As Suzanne mentioned, at that point, Lyle already had a, a 1041 approval in 1991, but he was coming back to adjust things and, and sold and donated this land to the, the public. So the public has really been benefiting from this property for more than 20 years. And then third and finally is 2014, which of course Suzanne focused on to a great degree. 2014 was when you granted a new activity envelope approval to this property. And as Suzanne mentioned, the most important thing there is it superseded all the prior land use approvals. This property really does have a tortured land use history of more than, more than 20, 25 years now, from 91 to 2016. There were numerous approvals given. At one point, the, the building envelope was way up at the top of the property. The envelopes had various sizes and shapes, but the resolution that you adopted, 106 2014, and the activity envelope plan that we recorded in Book 109, page 14, they not only establish where development can occur, which is really what activity envelope is all about. Your activity envelope process is where on the property is it appropriate for development to occur? And, and that was specified with the envelopes. But the resolution went further, and it specified exactly what can be built. And that's stated in Condition Five, which lists both the floor area and the unit entitlements. And I know you've heard this before. Do we have that? Yeah. I boiled Condition Five down into four very simple principles. What it says is that either one or two single-family residences can be built on this property, that the property's maximum allowable floor area is 9,800 square feet. It can also have 4,000 square feet of below-grade space per unit and 750 of garage space per unit. If two residences are constructed on the property, then one is limited to 1343, and the other, I think I got these numbers backwards, is 8457. That would actually add up to 9,800 square feet. So it's not 8547. I seem to have reversed the five and the four. It's 8457. And then the last point, and then, excuse me, if one residence is built, it's 9,800 square feet, period. And then the last point is that the exemptions that go with this property are only for 5,750 per residence exempt from growth management. So these residences do require either growth management allotments or TDRs to be purchased because clearly there is a proposal to build more than 5,750 per lot. So Condition Five, in my way of understanding things, is really fundamental to the understanding of this property. There have been letters submitted by the neighbors which have been provided to you which have questioned whether the property's entitled to a second dwelling unit. And I have trouble with, with that question simply because I don't think Condition Five could be any more explicit in recognizing the applicant's right to propose one or two units and in specifying the allowed floor area of those units. Those entitlements were discussed with you quite extensively during the hearings that you held with the Reader Trust. You may remember, we had those hearings over in the, the fire department conference room. That's when the activity envelope was approved. They were specified in Resolution 106 2014, and that resolution has three years of vested rights associated with it. To those who question whether those rights exist, I can only wonder, where were they in 2014 when this board granted those rights? I represented the Reader Trust at those hearings, and while all of those neighbors were given notice of those hearings, there weren't any objections raised when these entitlements were granted. We didn't hear any questions about whether it was appropriate for the resolution to talk about one or two. This board had many, many questions about that. This board questioned the county attorney in, in a great deal of, of detail about that. But in the end, you adopted Resolution 106 2014, and I think what it says is, is what it says. And I, I would hope we're not here to, to debate what it says because it's, it's a very clearly written document.
Alan, let me ask you a question. If we're not here to debate what it says, it says 1,000 and somehow, and 8,000 square. So you're actually debating.
No, we're, we're proposing an amendment to it. If this board chooses not to support the amendment, the applicant is entirely prepared to move forward with exactly what you approved in the original resolution. It's fine. We, we will take that approval, walk away with smiles on our face, and, and happily develop the project. We think that the Option Two that we've given you is better, not just for us, because clearly it works better for us. We think it works better for the neighborhood. And the onus is on us to demonstrate to you that it, it does work better for the neighborhood, and it is a better choice for the community. If you don't think so, then leave it as is. So yes, you're right. It, it's on us that we've brought that up, and, and I, I tried long and hard to tell Bill not to bring that up. But he came up with a better plan, and we'd like to present it to you. And if, if you don't like it, then we'll go right back to, to what was approved in 2014.
I just wanted to clarify, the absolute character that you were characterizing.
Perfectly, perfectly reasonable. What I have trouble understanding is how anybody can not see that in 2014, one or two units were authorized. That, that's what it says. And lastly, on that point, Condition Number Three of Resolution 106 states that this resolution repeals and replaces all the prior resolutions of approval. So 106 2014 is, is the whole ball of wax. Everything before it, it's nice history, but that's the only resolution that stands today. And the same thing with the activity envelope plan. It specifically says, we're repealing all the prior activity plan which might be inconsistent with this. So those were the, those were the items of, of record. So Bart, is there anything that you'd like to add to my points regarding that before I complete my introduction?
Suzanne, can you put on the document camera the exemption plat? So the, the letters that have been flying in over the last week, and I got involved to kind of help respond to those, and we've done some research, but, so Kurt Sanders, on behalf of the owner of Lot Two in Little Cloud, sent you a letter last week. And his basic argument is that the yellow triangle parcel B, that the development rights within it really shouldn't be allocated to the, the Track A lot. That's the subject of this application. And he's basing that on what I think is two literal reading of the original plat. The intent of the county and Mr. Reader, going back 10-plus years, has been documented several times in county records that he was selling and, and partially selling and partially donating two different development sites to the county for the Midland Trail, and he was getting the benefit of being able to use those on this Track A parcel. And that has been documented by the county a number of times, including in your 2014 resolution, after a lengthy discussion at the firehouse, you may recall, with John Ely, when you guys asked him specifically about these issues. And, and if you go back even further to the deed that Mr. Reader gave to the county for those parcels, it makes very clear that the development rights being reserved are everything shown in this plat, other than what he was keeping. And that deed was accepted by the county. I think Kurt's done some good research, but I just, I, I think if, when you look at the record, it's clear that that isn't consistent with what the county and Mr. Reader intended. And as Alan pointed out, the time for anyone to be raising those issues was over a year ago. You approved this in November of 2014. The state appeal period is 28 days after that. And the opportunity to speak and complain about it in front of you guys when you were making your decision was at that hearing. And, you know, his client wasn't there. And so now, it came as a real surprise to us that a week before this hearing, all of a sudden, this long 10-plus-year history has been called into question in a way that we think is inconsistent with what the county and Mr. Reader agreed to.
And just for the record, I think it was said earlier, but since we have the map up, and what, what has been the fate of Parcel B? It is a park now, or it's a residence?
It's part of the, the Coke Lumber Park.
Okay, so it was, it was, part of the exchange was to be able to increase the size of the Coke Lumber Park, and it is open space now? That was accepted. I, that's what I thought. I just wanted to also be very clear with that.
And that deed that Bart referred to is in the materials that were handed out to you at the very beginning of the meeting.
Rachel, can I add to that? And it's still in the ownership of the county open space, not the city?
The trail and, right, and Parcel B are county-owned.
There's a complex ownership issue there.
County-owned, I think the trail is managed by the city.
And it's managed, but it's owned by the county.
I spoke to John Ely on, yesterday morning, and he told me that he had looked into this, and that the, the partial purchase, partial donation deal with Lyle was, the, the purchase component of that was funded with county open space dollars for the acquisition of all these properties. And he had looked into that. It was, it's interesting in the context of what we're talking about right now, but he also looked into it with the idea that if they had to redo the driveway easement, that it would be a problem because you'd be basically requesting an easement grant over land acquired with county open space dollars, which would run into charter problems.
Right.
So that's why our engineers are going to have to, you know, are working with the city to tweak that, the driveway just slightly because there was a tiny corner of land outside the easement that was implicated by the, the engineering for the driveway.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to have that kind of restated.
So just for me to finish up, and then I'll turn it over to Bill. We were talking about the 2014 and all the approvals, and right after the approvals, the Reader Trust did sell the property to Mr. Berenger. He bought it, having not only read the resolution, but he was in that hearing up in the, in the fire department meeting room, and he understood exactly what it was he was buying and exactly what he needed to do in terms of the site plan. And the, the resolution is really quite rigorous in the conditions that it set on us to comply with. And Suzanne has mentioned all the various studies that we've been doing. We had to further investigate the rockfall hazard and design site-specific mitigation, which we've done. We had to ensure there were no environmental hazards posed to the site from past mining activities, which we've done. We had to evaluate off-site drainage and accommodate it onsite, which we've done. We've had to work with the city of Aspen to design an entry to the site off of Second Street, which would not only meet the city's standards, but would also accommodate the Midland Trail, would accommodate the snow storage needs right now because that street right now sort of dead ends at the top of Second Street, and snow is piled up at the end of it. And very importantly, we would have to accommodate the drainage requirements of the adjacent, excuse me, affordable housing complex. We haven't shied away from any of those challenges. We've taken on what are both onsite and off-site issues in an attempt to arrive at a balanced solution to complete what I would consider today to be a very incomplete top of Second Street. Throughout that process, the city engineering department really held our feet to the fire. If, if you've ever had to work with the city engineering department, as, as most of us in private practice do, you know it is one of the most challenging things that we, we face as, as planners and engineers. We worked with them literally for months throughout the spring and into the summer, and we arrived at what we thought was a perfectly acceptable design that met all of their criteria. And yet, during the review process, about three weeks ago, the city engineer rejected the solution that we had put forward and sent us back to the drawing board. We've gone back to the drawing board. We've come up with another solution, and this time, the city engineer, city parks and county open space trails support the entry that we've designed. So, you know, this is not something that's been done in a haphazard manner. It's had a lot of attention given to it over the last year-plus. So Bill, with that, I'm going to turn it over to you, and have you talk a little bit about your approach to this project.
Well, thank you, Alan, and Bart, and thanks Suzanne and staff and commissioners for your time and thoughtful consideration today here. And many of the first things I was going to mention, Alan's already covered, but with the coordination of city engineering, we also, from the start, even before we officially closed on the property in February 15, we were pretty proactive in our outreach to the surrounding neighborhood. I think our first meeting was with the, was aimed as part of the affordable housing complex right there at Second Street opposite the Ice Garden. And we, we took from day one a, what we believe to be a very considerate approach, and inquiring with the neighbors, especially that immediate neighbor below us, what, if any issues they have with their current site, drainage, mud flow, snow stores, parking, trash, et cetera. And we put our heads together and thought up a plan that's within our application of providing an improved drainage situation for their site. They had utmost concern if we did any regrading of the trail, that there would be mud flow, perhaps eroding down onto their buildings.
Good picture.
That's the existing condition at the end of Second Street there. And this is in the spring, just as you can see the...
This is last spring.
You can see the remnant of the snow storage still melting away there. And then we have come up with a plan that, if you can flip to the next photo or image illustration, simulation of how it'll look.
Okay.
With that area cleaned up and improved, just keep trying to find it if you could, please. That'd be great. We agreed to provide more of an enclosed trash storage for those folks, improve the drainage situation at the end of the street so their existing system that they invested quite a bit of money in would not, would actually be less burdened in the future. So it had, would add to longevity of that system. And in the course of doing that, we would basically finish the end of Second Street, which is now unfinished, by, you know, one of the other things is removing the old abandoned light post that was in the previous image. post that was in the previous image. And also, of course, properly landscape the end of that slope so that erosion doesn't continue as it has for decades. Another component which Derek Walter, our civil engineer, will address is the drainage improvements also include kind of repaving the end of the street where there's more of a positive pitch. As of now, in the certain air elements of the winter, in certain times of the winter, that becomes like an exterior ice rink opposite the interior ice rink. So it's quite a mess right now. So we believe that this solution is quite an improvement for the, not only the affordable housing folks, but the single-family home to our left that was just purchased a year ago. And as you can see here, by beautifying the end of Second Street, we're, with this parks and trails support, we're able to landscape this area so that our homes beyond, you can barely see them there through our driveway entrance, majority of our homes and structure are significantly screened from the Second Street perspective, which is, we think, another nice aspect of what we're able to do here. Again, with that, we continued our dialogue with the other neighbors in the neighborhood. We have a neighbor up above us, lot three in Little Cloud, who is supportive of our plans. We have our immediate adjacent lot two neighbor to our east, who was for many, many months in, in support of our intent to work together and improve common elements and adjoining property elements between our property and their property. And kind of at the last, last or eleventh hour here, we received an objection letter just last week, which was kind of curveball thrown at us. We had had several, over two hundred email communications back and forth, two hundred and forty-four exactly, and ninety-five text exchanges back and forth with that company's officers, and multiple phone and in-person meetings at my personal home, as well as onsite with the primary officer of that entity next door in lot two. And the result of all those meetings came up with a, we've come up with, in addition to what we're, what expenses and improvements we're doing at the end of Second Street for what we call the city folks and the city residents there, for our lot two neighbor, we initially agreed to approximately a hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars of landscape beautification of not only the common property line between our homes, but also other areas, including upgrading the entrance of Little Cloud neighborhood. We have also granted to that lot two neighbor two easements, formal easements, which assist with their staging and construction access to their site. As you can imagine, that Little Cloud trail above their home is quite narrow, and Second Street right-of-way is much more ample and wider, so we've allowed them to use our thirty-foot wide easement coming in through the corner of our property to get to their site in good faith of being a good neighbor. And we've also agreed to a soil now easement which saved them more than, in excess of a hundred thousand dollars of retention costs when they did their excavation. And then, kind of, in December, they, the neighbor, after we did all of that, came back to us with a request for four hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars of estimated landscape improvements out of our pocket. We responded a few weeks later after reviewing some legal agreements and putting careful thought to it with something very close to three hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars of contribution from us to not only their common property line, but to the entry of Little Cloud neighborhood for the benefit of the city of Aspen at the end of First Street to beautify that intersection, as well as what we're doing at Second Street, and et cetera. So I don't wanna be overly redundant about that, but for the sake of our spirit of this development, we've gone, we believe as far as possible to communicate with truly adjacent or impacted neighbors. And with what Alan was saying, if I can just wrap up with, with our feeling on the application is, if you can throw that one exhibit back up there with the yellow triangles, Suzanne, on the screen?
Thank you.
Everybody likes that.
You can hand it, you like the yellow triangle.
Suzanne, maybe you could point to where the, a couple iterations of approvals for this property in the, in the past, there was a building envelope to the far left of the screen, up high on the slope, which you can see. And in the course of the evolution of these approvals, the building envelope has slid down into the low area of the property. It's been tightened with setbacks and et cetera. So we believe that the current approvals that you folks had endorsed in November two thousand and fourteen are far more fitting to the context of the city of Aspen neighborhood adjacent to us. And we also believe, in the spirit of the evolution of these approvals being refined over time, we believe that the very slight reallocation of floor area from the larger home to the smaller home, creating two more balanced-sized homes is, is more in keeping with, integrating with the city of Aspen neighborhood. Of, if we can slip to the site plan showing our neighbors, I think it's on this sheet right, yeah, that one there. Yeah, this, this plan right here, of our smaller home, even with the F A R reallocation, and the amount of beloved, excuse me, above and below ground space that we're willing to forfeit in perpetuity, our approximate six-thousand-foot house is smaller than any of the other six homes around us. Starting at the upper left, the home is currently, currently in planning for lot four, Little Cloud, the existing home in lot three, lot two, eleven-thousand-foot approximate home that's currently under construction, lot one there in the bottom center, and then the recently sold house, which is technically across the, the trail in the city of Aspen. Of all those homes, our smallest home is still, will be smaller than all of those homes, even with the F A R rebalancing. So we believe that we're headed the right direction, and it's a thoughtful approach to this development.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's keep moving along with the presentation. We're about an hour, almost hour and a half in now.
We understand.
Thank you. My name's Derek Walter, and with Boundaries Unlimited, the engineer on the project. Sounds like you had a lot of questions for me, and I'll see if I can answer them as I walk through it. The project was analyzed by not only myself on the engineering side, but also with Arthur Mears, Mears for the rockfall mitigation. And as was explained before, there will be a rockfall fence that will exist behind the structures here, that will work to protect the structures and fill in the gap from the fence that's up above it. That piece in there also gets combined on the, kind of an off-site protection with an off-site drainage wall that will exist. And it always seems that these things fall apart. That will exist here that you can see. And this off-site stormwater wall is to catch the water, the runoff that comes from the hillside up above and across from Little Cloud Drive. C T L Thompson looked at that from a mudflow hazard perspective, because as you might know, this is within the city's mapped mudflow hazard zone in the red zone. They found that through their analysis that it wasn't a significant hazard, that there wouldn't be a lot of mud and sediment mixed with the stormwater runoff. So, it was put back on me to determine, okay, what was necessary in order to protect the structures and the site and the adjacent properties from that stormwater that comes off. And so what was found in that, in my additional analysis, was that we just need a small deflection wall. The topography that's on the hillside is pretty steep, so it's not conducive to putting swales, major excavations in there that would require the disruption of a lot of vegetation. So, we're putting in a small stem wall that'll be eighteen inches high on the backside to catch that water that comes in that's at a depth in a major event, the hundred-year event, of only about nine to twelve inches in depth. But we protect those structures, and the water will get caught on this wall and then be routed around the buildings, and then come down here to where the trail is. And the trail in this section, after we had to work out our driveway grades and such in here, results that it's in a cut situation, meaning that there's a little bit of a valley that exists where that trail is. So the water will come down, hit that trail, and then be directed into Second Street. And that's very important, because what that means is for the Ajax housing right here, means that off-site water that currently could come down in this area and flow across the trail up above them into their building will now be deflected into the street right-of-way where it belongs. So it provides greater protection for those neighbors.
Can you explain how it will be directed? I mean, I'm, I want more details, 'cause I'm visualizing water coming across a trail and potentially, you know, rutting it over time, or freezing in the fall or the spring when we still have very cold nights. Is it going to be piped to that direction, or channeled, or how, you know, how, once you leave the property line, how does it interact with the trail, and how does it interact with the streets?
That's a very good question. What happens during minor flow events, meaning those are like the year-two-year to ten-year events, is that this water will get deflected down here, and along the side of the trail, what we did is we pitched the trail back to the south. So that means the water flows towards the property rather than sheeting across it. So it'll get caught along this edge, and it'll come down, and we have a drywall system that's located here that's connected to an additional drywall system that is part of the site and regional pieces here. And the water, for the most part, on those minor events, which is what you see most often, will get down in here and get into this drywall and this drywall, and then if those fill up, it will overflow through a pipe that goes underneath the trail into this location and go into the street system. So what that means is, we actually designed the drywells to meet the city urban runoff management plan, which, as you might know, is extremely stringent and often produces greater safety factors for the properties and for runoff than any other criteria that's out there. So, so that's actually a huge benefit to the neighbors as well, is that this has all been, in essence, double-scaled in size from what typical county standards might be in other properties and other locations.
I think Patty has a follow-up question on this point.
What is the city's drainage system at that point? Because I know that that area is kind of in need of obvious improvement. So when it hits the city's stormwater drainage system on Second Street, what is their system?
Their system right now isn't that there isn't any underground conveyance that exists in that location. What currently happens is everything comes running down into this location, hits the street, and then there is a valley pan between the ice rink on the east side of the street that, if it makes it there, then it flows down that. A lot of times what happens is this, this property, or this area right here is pitched towards the Ajax housing, and so there it goes in and creates a mud pit right up to the south of where their previous paver system is, and then it might overflow into their previous paver system. So there's, there's not a whole lot of control that exists there now, but what we will do with this is we will be better directing all of this runoff so that it no longer goes towards the Ajax housing. But now, vast majority of it is captured and percolated into the soils, and what does runoff in a major event goes towards where it needs to go for conveyance to the city storm sewer systems. So there will still be some runoff, but one of the big things in here, if I can throw numbers at you, is under existing, I'm sorry, historic conditions before any development, there'd be approximately one and a half CFS of water that would flow into this area. What the result is gonna be after we percolate a lot of that water into the ground is we're only at point nine. So there's a great reduction, about forty percent reduction that occurs in the amount of water, the rate of water that peaks through in any of this area.
You're hoping to capture it, treat it before it hits Second Street?
Exactly.
The other question I have is the eighteen-inch wall that you're building behind to deflect, or to carry it down to the trail, what's the maintenance on that? Because if you have a significant issue and sedimentation, you know, sludge, mud, whatever builds up behind that, that's gonna just create a ramp for up and over. So there needs to be a maintenance system to maintain that, that stormwater deflection, whatever you wanna call it, wall?
So one of the things that's incorporated into that is there's erosion controls put behind that, either riprap or a manufactured fabric. Manufactured fabric will probably work better for maintenance and such, because it'll create a more even surface that could be addressed. But then go back to the C T L Thompson report, they found that there's not gonna be a significant amount of mud and sediment and such that comes through there. And we're maintaining the vegetative buffer up between Little Cloud Drive and the buildings and this wall, so that there can be sediment fallout that occurs inside that existing vegetative buffer.
I think there should be some way.
It's fine if you wanna require the two units to maintain that.
I was gonna say, that's item number seven on the reso, and perhaps we can work on a little language to add to that.
Very reasonable.
And the other question, going back just real quick, Rachel, please bear with me.
Please.
Rockfall protection, when is that gonna be installed? Before construction begins? And we have a.
Yes, yes, that was a requirement, and we agreed to it.
I don't want a bunch of construction workers running around.
It's the first permit that has to be pulled for this.
And so just to follow up on Patty's question, kind of a definitive question. So the city engineering and their stormwater program has signed off on this solution of what you intend to do and how you intend to deal with the street and the city street and all those things.
They were, they were given the same report for you, the engineering report, which I detailed in great extent. Their focus has been, it seems, more primarily on the driveway and the access, but I designed a lot of stormwater systems in the city of Aspen, followed all of their criteria with this. I was proactive on that side, rather than following county criteria and seeing if the city would be okay. I knew they were already more stringent, so I followed all of their criteria in it. And they didn't raise any concerns or comments, other than, what they did ask is that we have this additional drywall system that is being used for the driveway, and I was just about to jump into that. The driveway portion here, because I mentioned that the trail pitches back to this side, so all of that's taken care of in these drywells here. Then there's this portion here that we, that I knew that the city would be concerned with. So what we've done here with the driveway is, this is a snowmelt driveway, so we capture the water that's coming down the driveway into a trench drain right here so that the water doesn't go onto the street, and this is really important in the winter months. We don't want melted water to go onto a cold surface and freeze up again. So we capture it before then afterward it's been melted, and we pipe it over to these drywells. And both of these drywells have been, actually it's one system, but they're two in together, were coordinated with the city, they looked at all the calculations associated with it, and what they asked is that we pave around those so that sediment doesn't come from the surface into those drywells and create a hazard for them in their maintenance. Those drywells are also designed with water quality capture features inside of them, so there's a debris capture shelf inside of those to keep the ravels and such below from being sedimented in and not functioning properly. So all those additional protections have been put in according to their urban runoff management plan, and to provide and afford the protections that will not only suit the city, but will suit ultimately the neighbors and Ajax as well.
Did the city sign off on it?
Well, and I was just gonna say, I'm not entirely sure they need to or have to. I, I'm not as sure of their permitting situation when it's a property that's both city and county. It just sounds also that there should be maintenance agreement on the drywells mentioned as well, that they shall be kept in good working order.
I wanna make sure the city is in agreement with all these plans, 'cause whether or not, they have to sign off on it, and I wanna make sure that the city is in agreement.
Satisfied.
They have reviewed all of this at this point, and obviously provided comments. We have included them when all this goes to permit, and what they will be reviewing and signing off on. We're not gonna issue a permit if the city hasn't given us, or it's okay at that point.
It'd be good neighbors.
Speed? Well, and they also, it does need a city right-of-way permit. A lot of this work is happening in the city right-of-way, so.
These structures, the drywall up there, and on another drawing, it shows a snow storage and trash thing are actually not on, on the lot as near as I can tell. Do you have control of that land, or whose land is that on?
This here is all within city right-of-way, so here's the property line between the county property and then the city right-of-way. So everything here to the north is gonna be in that city section there, and so that's what we've been coordinating with them on the, the design systems, and what they, they need and want inside of there in order to protect their infrastructure and order to protect the neighbors, and as well as afford the greater common good in the design.
So we'll be doing the work off-site, and they'll be reviewing it and permitting it under their auspices.
So that'd be a separate approval from them that's outside their county.
Yeah, it's administrative with the engineering department, and they'll be issuing what, driveway permits or excavation permits.
Correct.
Yeah, we, we can't build this project without their approvals.
Yeah.
Fundamentally, our access comes through their right-of-way, so.
Right, okay.
I'll jump in real quick to the driveway here. So in the previous plan that you saw was the driveway came off on, oh, there he goes, wow, that was quick. This, this lineman that came from the west side, and we had had lots of conversations with the past in the past, what's been revised, as if you jumped to the other one there. Recently, we met with the city, Haley Guglielmo and Trish Ergon, to discuss this, and they asked that we move this access over to the east side. Their desire was to push it as far over as we could next to this property line that exists right here. What doesn't show up real well is the easement, I believe, is right there that we need to stay within. So when we tried to push it over here, we ended up cutting and clipping it across the, outside the easement. So this plan here shows that we pushed over as far as we could, we stayed with inside of the easement, avoid all those other conflicts and troubles. We're only a few feet off from what they were asking us to do before. We had to steepen up the driveway a little bit than what it'd been before, from about seven and a half percent up to about nine percent, but that's still within good tolerable limits. It's also snowmelt. It's also snow melted, which helps. Another aspect that was put in by Parks and Open Space was that they want the user right-of-way to be the trail users. So trail users have the free flow up and down, east and west on this trail. Vehicular drivers will stop, there'll be stop signs on each side of the trail and signs also stating that right-of-way is given to trail users. So they'll have to stop, look both ways, make sure it's safe, and then be able to proceed through. So we also worked out with them what the site triangles are and to make sure that there's no landscaping or obstructions within the site triangle that are taller than 36 inches. So all that's been incorporated into what you see here on this new layout. We also worked on the footpath, which right now is a very rudimentary trail that goes up the hillside. It's just kind of, it's just people have walked, decided where they're going to walk, and now it's kind of a mud-gravel mixture. So we're going to redefine that. Spoke with Austin Weiss about what would be suitable there, and so this path will now meander up the hillside more and we'll, in a couple of locations, we'll put in some stepping stones in order to gain the elevation we need to make sure that this trail in no place is steeper than about eight percent in grade. So right now you're going from about 17 to 25% grade. If you try to make it up there, it can be treacherous in the winter or when it's muddy. This will clean that up, we'll put a surface on it with some crusher fines, and it'll become more of a defined user entity rather than what it is right now. And then kind of in the last bit, going back to the drainage piece here, wanted to reiterate what this means for Ajax and for the other property owners around there. Right now, their permeable paver system, it is in, I'd call, jeopardy. There's the great opportunity for sediment to go into that. Sediment is, and fines are a huge detriment to that type of a system, can completely ruin its ability to infiltrate waters. What we're going to do for them in this is to almost completely remove that threat by the introduction of these multiple dry well locations, the capture of runoff in the trench drain and the underground piping to those dry wells, as well as the paving around the dry well. So they're going to see a great benefit to their system. They have hundreds of thousands of dollars invested into that system, and this is going to allow their system to increase dramatically in longevity and reduce maintenance.
Okay. Thank you. Are there board questions for our engineer expert here?
I know we've gone over.
Okay, thank you.
So I'm going to cut half of what I was going to say out and get you to the architect, who is our last presenter.
Okay.
We just, we wanted to give you this sense of the option one versus option two, and there are really two things about option two that we wanted to make clear to you. There are two inducements, if you will, that we're offering as part of the option two approach. One is that the applicant is voluntarily reducing the allowable floor area associated with this option. So basically where today there is 9,800 square feet of floor area allowed above grade between the two units, we've taken 500 square feet out of that and reduced it to 9,300. And where today there is 4,000 square feet of subgrade floor area allowed for each of the units for a total of 8,000, a smaller house would be limited to 3,000 square feet, a larger one a 4,000. So we're taking 1,500 square feet off the table, and that's inducement number one. And the second inducement, and yeah, we've shown the appropriate drawing for that, you see this green roof kind of at the front of the project. That's in front of the smaller of the two units. This has been designed to essentially, as Suzanne mentioned, push the mass of the smaller unit back into the hillside and away from the trail. The one-story garage element at the front has a green roof, the floor area above grade gets recessed to the rear of the structure. The applicant is willing to or intends to record a covenant or any kind of document that the county attorney and planning office want us to, to ensure that this modification is not just something that you see today, but that this modification runs with the land. So if anybody comes in to modify the smaller unit and wants to change its arrangement or wants to tear it down and start all over, they can't suddenly bring the square footage to the front. So that would be a permanent option versus the option one. Do we have the, yeah, so you see how the option one approach, basically because there is so little floor area above grade allowed, only some 1,350 square feet, it basically all has to be really desirable floor area. I mean, for this unit to have any desire whatsoever for the family that Bill is working with, if option one is what we're going to have, then that floor area is going to be up there by the trail, it's going to have the most light possible and all of those things. So we think that's a pretty important inducement that we're offering. With that, I'm going to turn it over to the architect because I know we've gone over and I don't want to say anymore.
Thanks. Thank you.
Thanks, Alan. My name is Zach Rocket. We've been working on this now for quite a while with the team, and I will keep this brief, but I think what I would like to point out is both the, kind of, if we want to start with the site plan and kind of go through the massing from that angle. As we've been discussing, we have the smaller unit and the larger unit, and what Alan was just describing is the one-story component that we're proposing in this option two for the smaller unit. And what that is allowing us to do is to take the mass or the house component of the smaller unit and push it back an additional kind of 30 to 40 feet from the front property line. So in effect, what's required to do that is that we're making a deep cut into this upslope side of the hill. And so in order to kind of toggle the square footage conversation that we're having, to go with the slightly larger home in this lower corner, there's more kind of efficiency and resources to cut into a hill, which is at considerable expense to the owner. And so if we were to go with this smaller unit, it makes a lot more sense to kind of pull it out and match the front property line. And so I think the takeaway on that point is that the mass of this lower unit does get pushed back further into the site. And then go to the next slide, we'll talk quickly about the massing from a site section standpoint. And so this lower line here is the current grade of the site. And as you can see, the Midland Railroad, which was the original, what has now become the Midland Trail, is an elevated little spit of land that separates Second Street from this parcel. And so behind this trail is a considerably low spot that is probably not what the historic grade was prior to the construction of that railroad bed. But the result of that low land is that it effectively pulls the building height line down at the front of the lot. And so this is a section through the larger of the two homes, and on the street side or on the trail side, what we're presenting is a two-story mass, and then we're holding the top level, which is a series of bedrooms, at a considerable distance from the front lot line. And so this is in effect, a three, you know, the third story of the house gets pulled back a considerable distance from the front, and the reading from the upslope side or the Little Cloud roadway is that it's a one-story component. So on the front of the property, we're showing two stories, and on the back, we're showing one. That's the larger home.
You may remember that depression from the city we did back in 2014. You were all standing on that trail, and it's kind of a bowl down there, and whether it's the natural grade or not, it's what the code requires us to comply with, and we do.
Yeah.
No high mismanagement or variance here. We're complying, period.
Right. And what's turning out to be a nice amenity, I think, to the community relative to this trail is that it is working to be this kind of visual buffer from the roadway to the houses. And so as you can see here, this is the cut through the smaller of the two homes, this is the one-story garage component with a basement below, but by burning on the front side of it, we're really proposing to see, you know, a partial height, one-story component, and this is the one with the green roof, and then setting back considerably from the front lot line, we're then stepping up another story, notching back again and stepping up to the top floor. And so again, from the Little Cloud roadway above, this house will also have a one-story profile in the back and a one-story profile in the front with the tallest portion of the mass pushed kind of to the middle of the site in effect. So then here again, from the street, you can start to appreciate, I think, the buffer that this trail elevation is providing relative to the visual impact of these houses on, you know, not only as a view from the street but from the adjacent neighbors. And so with the alignment of the driveway is giving us a considerable wedge of property to landscape and provide a further kind of vegetative buffer to the houses. And then you can see our property line fence kind of running along the trail. And then this is more of a true elevation of the two homes proposed, and we're kind of superimposing the neighbors that are around. So this is the lot three unit that's already built above, and this is the house that's under construction next door. And one thing to point out is that-
That's our objecting neighbor.
Both of these houses are well above, being constructed well above in elevation, the two that we're proposing. So our most immediate neighbor is the lot two neighbor, who was able to build within five feet of their lot line. We're setting back 15 feet from the lot line, so there'll be 20 feet in between the two homes. They were also able to negotiate a kind of historic grade for their parcel, I think, relative to some land movements that had happened on this property, which in effect kind of lifted their house up out of the site. So they're accessed from above, we're accessed from below, and our houses are, you know, what we're attempting to do is to nestle them into this hillside and in effect kind of show these kind of two-story datum along the street line with our three-story elements kind of pushed back considerably and changing the material to kind of distinguish the massing such that you're not getting kind of the reading of one kind of considerable home, more so you're kind of breaking apart the different components with different materials and articulating the facades in that manner.
We really feel like we're an extension of the city grid there, and the neighboring house is sticking up on the hillside and looming over.
Okay, so that's your full presentation. Are there any questions for our architect friend here?
We can flip through a few more three-dimensional images if you guys are interested to see those. We have a couple exhibits talking about the relationship of the neighbors to our houses. Views, I think, from the trail. This is, to the left is the existing condition of the trail looking to the north, and this is the kind of proposed slight amendment to the trail where we're bumping it out from the property line fence and providing this landscape planted zone in between the trail and the property. And then this is the kind of boulder kind of rock condition off to the right with the landscaping, et cetera.
And those improvements were supported by the open space and trails?
Yes.
Okay.
And then this is the kind of final view coming down the trail heading towards town. You can see the property line timber fence here and the two-story component of the larger house off to the right. So, you know, approved landscaping to the left, landscape between the trail and the property and then the two-story component of the house.
Patty?
Yeah, I have a question, and I'm not quite even sure how to ask it, and I'm hoping that you can help me answer it.
Sure.
So if you have a house that is 2,093 square feet, which would be the above-grade 1343 without a garage at the proposed, well, option one, how many, what subgrade square footage can you fit under that 2,093 square foot footprint? Can you put the 4,000 square feet underground there?
You don't have to stick to the footprint above grade. So, yeah, you could extend beyond the footprint.
So you'd have 2,000 square feet of subgrade running under the parking area or something?
Potentially are off to one of the sides. You just need to comply with the setbacks of the property.
Thank you. Additional board questions? Okay, for Suzanne or Alan? And Alan, you're finished?
We're all done.
Great.
And we're sorry it was taking as long as we did.
No, that's okay. It's a complicated, modern property. Board, would you like to take a five-minute break, 10-minute break? I see George kind of giving me the high sign there. And then we'll go into the public hearing and board decision-making discussion. So, Dr. Rich, thank you for the 10 minutes break.
Before, the reason Little Cloud is here today, and they've asked me to write a letter, is the concerns with the option two plan. And so, and those concerns primarily relate to the impact upon the option two design upon the Little Cloud property, but they also relate to how that affects the Midland Along those lines, there was some statements that were made about the applicant's efforts to be collaborative with Little Cloud Estate, and I'd like to point out that those occurred prior to the submission of the current land use application, and in particular, the option two proposal. So as soon as option, this current application was submitted, there's been radio silence with the applicant despite efforts of Little Cloud to communicate with respect to that option. So that's why the letter was submitted, and that was the means of communication of Little Cloud Estate's concerns with option one. So-
We need to have just one conversation going, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Kurt.
Okay, thank you. So, you know, Alan pointed out that, he gave the land use history and brought up to, brought everything up to resolution 106, 2014, which is the current approvals. And then there's statements in the application that talked about the language in those approvals. And so when I reviewed the option two plans, the question that I had is, gee, these are strange, these are strange square footages that show up in this language. The allocation of the 13, the 1343 and the larger amount for the other house. So my question was, is where did that come from? So as a consequence of that, I went back and reviewed the file documents, and my takeaway was it's not so clear as maybe has been represented. And so, not to suggest that there's a misrepresentation, but I think that there is some, there are some questions on that, and if that language in reso 106, 2014, that condition five, is the platform for the current FAR, and it's also the departure point for what the applicant wants to do to amend those ratios, then there needs to be an understanding of where that came from. And I acknowledge the fact that that land use approval wiped the slate clean on the prior approvals, but I still think the history is relevant, but I also think the specific language in condition five is relevant. So Suzanne, could you put up that exemption plat that you put up earlier that I provided?
Everybody's favorite exhibit.
Yeah, and I have a bigger copy of it.
The yellow triangle.
Correct.
I'm dreaming about it tonight.
So, again, we've discussed this already, and-
That's the microphone.
I can't point that?
Not the pointer.
Shoot somebody's eye out.
Make sure that's on.
Right. Okay, so when I looked into this, I looked at the language of condition five, and that language, you know, Alan provided the summary of it, but it also, the actual language says one or two single-family residences may be built on the parcel based on the 1992 contract with the county and the note on the plat recorded in plat book 30 at page 23. That's what this document is.
Right.
Okay. So the language in condition five that we're talking about today emanates from this document, and it emanates from a 1992 contract between Laureter, Wolfton, and another entity in Picken County. So where this gets tricky is what is government lot 20? You know, what does that mean? And so government lot 20 is this. That was owned by Wolfton at the time this plat was recorded, and what this plat did is it took that government lot 20, it created track A, which is what the applicant owns, it created track B, which is right here, and it created track C, which is the cross-hatched here. So you've taken government lot 20, you've made it into three pieces. And then what it also did is it platted, where'd I go? It platted this tiny little triangle here, I believe, which was the result of a survey error, and it platted parcel B. error, and it platted parcel B. Parcel B was owned by Mr. Reader, this parcel, government lot 20, the entirety of it was owned by Wolf Tone. So the county enters into a contract to purchase this piece, and this piece, and this piece, and this piece. And in that contract that was signed, the language states that the B O C C, development rights, including allowable floor area associated with the original lot 20 parcel of land, are reserved to the government, or to the track A parcel. So what was the original government 20 tract of land? It was this. It was not this. That's what the contract says. The plat gets recorded, the contract contemplates that there will be a reservation of those exact same rights on this plat. And you can't see it, but right in there, it has a note, and that note says that, and consists of approximately 39,261 square feet, shall retain the development rights, so that's this parcel here, this is the 39,000 square foot parcel, shall retain the development rights, including allowable floor area associated with the original lot 20 parcel of land. That's that right here. So to me, that, whatever the intent may have been at the time, and we can debate that now, to me, that has significance. That's what the plat says. That's what the contract entered into with the county says, and the current land use approvals reference that language in that plat. Therefore, in my mind, there's a question as to why, if this parcel was not part of government lot 20, the plat reservation did not pull that FAR and that development right over to here. So why does that matter? I believe it matters because what the applicant is trying to do now is take this convoluted configuration of FAR that we've got now, that results on what I think was a bit of a blunder regarding this piece, and compound it further by rejigging the FAR as between the two development rights on this property. And it's worth noting that the history on this was, Mr. Reader got this approved, it got signed by the county, and then in 2002, he came along and got an approval, he requested approval of two single-family residences on this piece, and the county denied it, and he got one single-family residence and a CDU. And then he came along and asked the county to clarify that he got, that he really had the full 9,800 square feet of FAR for this property. And so what happened is, the county gave that to him, but somebody assumed that that 9,800 included this. There's no express statement to that effect, it just got lumped in there. And I think it's because there's some unfortunate naming conventions with these parcels. You've got track B, parcel B, track A, government lot 20. So that's where this 9,800 total FAR first shows up, is in 2002, and it was in the context of one single-family residence and a CDU. Those vested rights subsequently lapsed, and then we come forward to 2014, and you've got the current approval. I reviewed the land use file, I reviewed the application. I wasn't at the discussion at the firehouse, but I didn't see in the application any specific analysis of where we get to. You've got FAR from this entire property, and you've got FAR that comes from this property. You add the two together, you get 9,800 square feet. If you do it separately, then you've got a bigger chunk to deal with from this parcel and a smaller chunk to deal with from this parcel. I understand it, that makes sense, it's confusing. So from Little Cloud Estate's position is, okay, we can deal with that, we get it. And based upon that analysis, there was no objection to the approvals that were given in 2014. The current application gets filed, it's an amendment to that program, which Little Cloud Estate believes is already flawed. And on top of that, it's resulting in impacts upon lot two, and we believe it's going to impact the Midland Trail. So that's the basis of the objection. It's not that Little Cloud was asleep in 2014. It's not that Little Cloud Estate doesn't want to see this property get developed. It's based upon Little Cloud Estate objects to option two, and doesn't object to other aspects of the application. Little Cloud Estate has attempted to be very collaborative with respect to the development of the two properties, because that's just a function of what's going to have to happen in terms of how these both get developed. The only issue is this option two plan.
Kurt, let me ask you, because you deal with our land use code frequently, and you've probably represented developers who've come in to ask for an amendment or a change to development approval. I find a little disconnect between saying, "We can live with option one," or what's already there, and the 9,800 square feet as allocated, "But if you allocate it differently, we object." And so it seems you're circumventing or undercutting your own argument that the 9,800 is somehow flawed, and so therefore we shouldn't be allowed to amend the application or the approvals. So you're, on the one hand, you're saying, "Well, it's okay, we'll live with it over here. Whether it's valid or not, we think we'll live with it, but if you take that same validity and then reallocate or balance with a different design, we don't think it's valid."
Well, I guess what I would say, Rachel, is, I haven't come out and said, "Commissioners, you should strip a development right off this property and pull away the FAR that comes with this piece." I haven't said that, and it wasn't requested. My letter requested that it be looked into. So that's really not the issue. Again, after spending a lot of time breaking down how this property got to where it is now, Little Cloud Estate accepts the analysis that there was a small piece of property that was a fathering parcel and gave rise to a smaller bucket of FAR, and there was a bigger piece that gave rise to a bigger bucket of FAR. We accept that, we can live with it, but the step beyond that is what's objectionable to Little Cloud Estate, and that is a further changing. And the basis for the further change is, I hate to speak for the applicant, but it's, "Well, we think we can do a better project, and we think it's better for the neighborhood and the transition city to county." And we disagree. We fundamentally believe that a big house and a smaller accessory house is a better outcome than two nearly equal-sized homes and the impacts that go with that.
Thank you. That's very concise. George?
So a question for Laura. The applicant, or at least the way I understand it, the applicant is viewing this as one parcel and being able to just make some adjustments in terms of their FAR.
And just to clarify, by one parcel, you mean parcel A on track A?
The governmental lot-
20.
And parcel B?
This one, up here. Is that the question?
Well, the question is, based on the comment, how does parcel B, is parcel B a separate lot that has its own FAR ability? Or does parcel B become and join with parcel A to be able to reconfigure?
So when the approval was done back in 2014, the FAR calculation was based on two separate parcels, parcel A and parcel B, the FAR coming from parcel B being transferred to parcel A because parcel B was conveyed to the county for open space.
George, are you asking whether the larger parcel actually had lot lines set up that would be two lots that specifically allocated the certain FARs?
So what we're hearing, the yellow triangle, is that lot B?
Yes.
Parcel B.
Parcel B, I'm sorry. So parcel B, what I've heard is that that's a separate lot that has its own FAR capability.
From parcel A, which was lot 20, yes.
Lot 20, yes. So they are two unique, separate lots.
They were.
They were. And now, since the 2014 resolution, those two lots were combined?
The FAR associated with both lots were combined. Lot B is now in county ownership, parcel B. So the FAR associated with that was transferred to parcel A.
Oh, okay.
And parcel A's zoning is consistent with having two residences on it, but there is no lot line across lot A to say, "This is where X must go, and this much Y must go."
Correct. I anticipate there will probably be a land condominium at some point, but that has not occurred.
Alan, did you want to address that and clarify one more time?
If you look at that condition five, in effect, George, the resolution itself treats the floor area as both separate and combined, because the resolution says that the floor area, just as Kurt has said, the floor area for the smaller unit comes from parcel B, and it would be 1343, and the floor area for the larger unit comes from the remainder that was government lot 20. Or you can build a single-family residence that's 9,800 square feet that amalgamates the two. So it's sort of, it's a hybrid, if you will. What we're suggesting here is clearly an amendment. We're asking for you to change the approval, and you have the discretion to say yes or no to that. We thought it was in everyone's interest to look at that, to see what the separate units of different size look like, and for you to make the choice. And it's all in your head. We don't have the right to ask for it, we're asking for it.
Do other board members have questions coming from this? Kurt, you had basically finished your-
I think so. And again, I'd like to let Stan Mathis speak for a moment, because again, the basis of the objection is not just to nitpick the approvals, it's to question the approvals from the standpoint of why are we amending questionable approvals. So Stan is going to address then the substance of the concerns with respect to option two.
Okay.
And again, I would just close. Alan offered to take option one and walk with it with a smile. We pick him up on that if that's still on the table.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
All right, we're going to see if-
Hey, just identify yourself for the recording.
Oh, I'm sorry, Stan Mathis, architect and planner for Little Cloud Estate LLC. I'm going to go back to some low-tech presentation here. Oh, well, sorry, Alan, just a low-tech guy. Now while the applicant is concentrated on the benefits of option two, I'd like to go a little bit more into depth in the real comparison of option one versus option two.
Okay.
So we put up these first two boards.
Can we turn the lights on? Sure. And we got guys coming in.
Suzanne, could you move the water bomb?
If we could move the sideboard conversations out of the room.
Thank you, Tom, period, Mr. Thank you.
Okay, so we have option one here on the left, option two on the right. Probably in your way. Okay. I have outlined house two in both options with the same color, green. I've outlined house one in both options with orange. And you'll have to pardon the way they're positioned. Option one shows the main level plan on the far right-hand side, while option two has the main level in the middle of these graphics. And I think what's important here is to talk about the perception of this from the trail and from the neighborhood in general. You can see in option one, where we've got a large house and a smaller house, you have a pretty wide visual corridor that goes through. So as you're coming down the trail, you're looking up the hill, enjoying Shadow Mountain. As you pass by house one, you see this pretty substantial gap. Then you come by house two, and then we have a substantial gap again. In option two, things get necked down pretty severely. So that as you're walking down the trail, you have to remember that we don't see things in a 2D plane, we see them as a perspective. So as you come by house one, you're looking at the corner of house two, where things now have been necked down. So let me get my next board. I'd also like to point out that, you know, if we were really, the applicant talked about the community benefit of moving the floor area that was over the top of the garage that's demonstrated in option one. So we get a green roof in option two. Well, the exact same program could have been submitted for option two, for option one, pardon me, with the floor area put to the rear of the lot. Don't know why they did it that way, except that I suppose or suspect that they discovered in option one, option one's floor area over the top of the garage blocked option two, pardon me, house two and its views. So this is simply a larger representation of option two. And you can see, they went from wide here, the same distance apart up here, to now necked down pretty severely. And the grade rises between these two houses as it marches up the hill. So as we're coming along through here, and we're looking back this way, as you can imagine the line, oops, I see the corner of that house. As I march a little further along, that's the only place I get a straight shot view through the gap. And as I get back down here, and I look along the line of the building, building two here, wham, I'm looking at house one again. So it's a very small opportunity of visual space in option two as opposed to option Now the blue represents how I see the perception of these two structures being perceived. Not as two, not as a big house and a big house, but as one single entity. And that then brings us to the representation of the perspective they show. I believe what I show in orange here is more truly accurate and representative of what you see. And one specific point along the trail is you're looking up, straight through the shot. And if you move left or right of that, you're going to see the back end of the larger building and the back end of the large building. And that's the reason why I believe we're talking about a huge mass. Last but not least, I'm going to circle back around and once again show, this is option one. This is the house on lot two in pink. Once again, house one in orange, and house two in green. again, house one in orange, and house two in green. So you can see that we've got these nice view patterns between the buildings all the way up the hill. Therefore, I think option two doesn't serve the community as well as option one. Questions?
No, thank you. Thank you very much.
Go ahead.
Okay. We're getting on to 340. There's been a lot of issues raised. We're gonna continue the public comment period. Is there anyone who has not yet spoken to the board? Please, sir. Come on up.
Hello. My name is Matthew Ferguson, and I represent Terry and Cynthia Taylor, who own, is this the pointer?
No, that's the microphone.
That's the microphone.
But you have a chair too, so.
Oh.
Pointer on the front.
That's it?
Yeah, the red button on the front.
Okay.
By God, for Steve.
All right. I'm gonna be five, four or five minutes. I represent the Taylors who bought lot two, or lot, sorry, lot one at Little Cloud in 2000. And I seem to be before the, this commission on Little Cloud only. That's kind of why I show up here all the time over the last, last 12, 14 years. Lance will attest to that. The Taylors, real quickly, bought the house from a spec builder. They're from Florida. And about two years into the ownership, they realized that their house had been built in a red avalanche zone and a red rockfall zone. We entered into litigation for a few years, and as a result of that litigation, I'll take credit and Mr. Taylor will take credit for building that, that brujet. That's how the case got settled. The Taylor's house is here on this diagram that's in the applicant's, sheet 12 in the applicant's application here today. The main living areas of their home, their porch and their decks look straight out.
Can we pull up one of the maps that actually has the homes on it? Thank you.
Is that, is that sheet 20? Uh, sheet 12, rather.
To which, which lot then is the tape?
It's gonna pop up here.
It's gonna pop up there, Mr. Child.
I think they need to hit the button on the Elmo.
Oh, right.
Yeah.
There it is.
Good. That's perfect.
No, I have sheeted though. Thank you.
So, Mr. Child, this is my client's home here. Their brujet is here. They, they own this home, and their, their living areas are out here. This is all their, their decks and porches and their, and their breakfast rooms and kitchens. So this is basically the living area. I will tell you that through, after Mr. Reader passed, the Taylors were willing to buy this lot and actually sterilize it, take the tax credits and donate it to the county or city. But the price kept getting chased up, and we chased it up to a point that eventually, I guess the applicant, Mr. Berenger and his group, ended up buying it. One of the reasons we ended up not buying is because lot two, this development started, it has a lot of gardening and pools and decks down here. So it really didn't make much sense for this to happen. I will tell you that, in addition to be willing to have bought that, but that has not occurred and will never occur, I guess, at this point, we did show up at the 2014 firehouse meeting, and we did object to the approvals, to the site, site plan application at that point, based largely upon geotechnical issues, which we became very familiar with. Mr. Mears was our expert in that case, and in the, in the defense case. And we objected to it then. It was at that meeting that I was there with a lot of the neighbors and who I became very familiar with over the years, with Mr. Berent and Mr. Kuhn and people like that, who've always been friends of Shadow Mountain. I think we can all agree that probably if we could turn the clock back 30, 40 years, this would, this would all be open space, and no one should be living under the, under this rockfall and avalanche zone. But here we are. At that meeting, we had always thought that there was, as Mr. Sanders had pointed out, a single-family home with a CDU. We had always thought that was the deal. There would be one big house there with a, with a CDU. I guess those, those approvals expired. We, we opposed either the app, the, the site plan as planned, as, as stated at the 2014 firehouse meeting. And it was at that meeting that we briefly heard from Mr. Ely that said, listen, we think they have a right to two homes. One of them's gonna be small. We're like, you gotta be kidding me. Two homes in this thing? That's, we'd never thought that. But it's small, and we'll, I guess we'll have to live with it. And that we did. We were approached in January by Mr. Berenger, a very swell guy, very polite, and came by the office, my office, and recognized that I owned, that I represented the Taylors. And it was at that point sometime in mid-January where we heard about this lot, option one, option two. And he explained it to us. I'm not gonna go through it again. You've heard about it all day, all afternoon. And he asked me whether we would agree to option two. I've spoken to my client about that, and they oppose option two. They are not happy about option one either. I did talk to, let me put this perspective. I, I've sued Mr. Sanders' client a few times over the years, and we've agreed on very little over the years, but we do agree on, on this. And with, with respect to Mr. Sanders' report, I did write a letter concurring that the, the creation of two homes in this lot is very curious. And I, and I, when I studied his papers, I actually agree, and I actually be probably arguing more strongly than Mr. Sanders, that it probably should be only one home. But we, I concur that it should be looked into. But if it isn't looked into, we oppose option two. And I, I think that you asked a very good question, and you, and Mr. Sanders gave a very good answer, why. The reason is because this is basically, they're going, they're trying to give you the benefits of, option two has benefits. We're gonna sterilize 1,500 square feet. We're gonna do these, all these nice little things. But the bottom line is that this lot is gonna now have two main homes. It's gonna have two houses. They're gonna be impacting that trail with two homes. I live in a 3,000-foot home with my, my three kids, and I know how much activity and cars go into that house as opposed to the, the smaller house, the 1,300-square-foot home. So we oppose it for that reason. We think the activity is out of, we don't think two homes is, is proper in the first place, but we think the activity of two homes is, is not what was ever intended for this, this location. I totally understand what Mr. Richmond and Mr. Berenger are trying to do. They're trying to make it more commercially viable. But they asked for the 1,300-square-foot home. I think they got more than they deserved. And I think that this is mission creep. This is, this is, this is a lot that was gonna have one big home on it with a CDU. Now it's one big home with a smaller home, and now they want two big homes. And we oppose it for those purposes, those reasons. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Additional public comments, sir? Please come forward.
My name is Tom Lewis, and I am the principal behind Little Cloud Estates. Been here before your predecessors many times in the development of the Little Cloud subdivision, which we did. And just a quick note, we've had, excuse me, I'm a little hoarse, but we have had a good relationship with Bill and his group all along, until the last moment when we heard about the option two. The reason we did not appear in 2014 is we had looked into it, a smaller home that was always represented as being ancillary or a guest home to a larger home was something we could live with. What's been proposed is unacceptable for all the reasons that the architect has explained to you. It will appear as one giant home, however you cut it. It will be that way from the house that we're building on lot two, and it'll also be that way from the trail. So those are the reasons behind why we don't wanna go along with two. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Please, sir, come forward.
Hello. My name is Amos Underwood, and I live at Ajax Apartments. First, I want to thank Matt and Bill. They've been excellent for communicating what's been going on and what they've been doing, as well as Derek, as far as stormwater goes. I do want to address Alan's comment about not being there for the 2014 agreement. We were there. The HOA submitted a letter to the staff in May of 2014 with a lot of the same items that we reissued our letter in 2016. Mr. Richmond hosted our HOA in his office to discuss them, at which point he told us that the majority of the comments in there, this was not the time or place to discuss them. The time to do it was at site plan. And so, I would like to say that, you know, there was no discussion of two homes at that point. So, you know, now, now is the time to talk about it. And our, my position is, is that I, I concur with the last two attorneys who just spoke, that if you review back with the documents, it clearly states that it was designed for a single-family home and an attached caretaker unit. The next rendition came was just a single-family home with a detached caretaker unit. And at this point now, with the superseding for 2014, we're at two single-family homes. You know, overall, I, I think it's apparent that the applicant would like to preserve their FAR from the original area, but original sized lots, but the lots have gotten smaller. And as a result, their current application does not match 2014's requirements, and therefore they're having to come in and ask for amendments from you guys so that they can make it, make it work. There are some other items in here. I think, you know, maybe they'll get brought up during building permit. One of them is the fire emergency access. You know, obviously if they tried to bring a fire truck onto the site, it would reduce a lot of the square footages they would be allowed to do. So I think they're looking at other alternatives, such as the alley behind the ice gardens, which, due to all the snow we just had recently, you know, it slid, and it was about five feet deep down the entire alley for three or four days. So just something to kind of keep in mind. I guess to, to close, I, I think that, you know, we prefer option number one over option number two. And lastly, I think we'd like to just see one deed for this property. We don't really wanna see a subdivision and two deeds going in so that we have two new giant homes, homeowners coming in. One, one neighbor is preferred.
Okay. Can I ask Amos a question? Yes, please.
Amos, the issue of the stormwater, since you live there and you see the water flow and the patterns, do you have concerns over issues coming off of this property and impacting, as Mr. Fornell said, about impacting your property?
I do have concerns. Currently, the, the city of Aspen requires each of us to carry $150,000 insurance policy for, if the city was, needed to come in and do work on it, which is more than what the house costs in the first place. I've spoken with Derek about it, and I think, you know, his designs, you know, are going to help, help improve it. But I guess I would agree with Mr. Fornell that it would be nice to have someone, you know, if they're gonna affect our stormwater, that they either, you know, take over or help share the requirements on that.
Thanks, Amos. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much. Additional public comment on this item? Please.
Can we respond to a few of the comments?
Generally, the applicant does get the opportunity to respond to comments, but that would be separate from public comment. So, it would be brief. Are there any other public comments for the board? Okay.
Yeah.
Please.
Hi. My name is Matt Brown. I'm involved with Bill and the ownership. One just slight note here, we are working with Recycle. They identified Second Street as high priority area for them, and they're doing satellite station, which is a slightly smaller bicycle rack for Recycle anyway. We have friendly with Mirta and have agreed to sponsor a station at the end of Second Street, which is another amenity for the neighborhood and you probably know the statistics about the drivership of Reduct, so I won't go there. But we have a letter from her acknowledging that.
So, is that part of the application?
It was not part of the application. I've been in contact with Mirta since this conversation kind of started. And she acknowledged that she, she had talked to them and that they had made this offer and.
And this offer only holds to option two, not to option one?
Well, we didn't, you can do it there, but I, no, I wouldn't say that.
We, we, you know, as a board, really support Recycle, so.
Yeah.
I just had to.
We put it forth regardless.
Okay. Just needed to clarify that.
We just wanted to put it into the record.
You know, clearly, we're only hearing an application about amending and request to go to option two. Our presentations made in the public meeting are adhered to. And so, it would, it would obviously go with our decision today in some ways, and then if they default to another position, they just have to see. But we couldn't extract that separately or see that.
I'm gonna submit that letter from Mirta.
Yeah, we need to have that, for the record, for Jeanette would be very helpful. Thank you, Michael.
I'd ask you more.
Any comments from Laura, dear?
Well, just to clarify a couple points. These are vested development rights, what currently exists on the property. And that exists until 2017. To the extent that various individuals would prefer to challenge what currently exists, the opportunity to do so was through a one-of-six action within 28 days of the approval, which did not occur. So the way things sit right now legally, the vested development exists on the property for up to two residences for the amounts discussed. The board has discretion to change that allocation if you so desire. There's nothing in the land use code that would prescribe or mandate you to do so.
Okay. Thank you.
I would add, if that happens, if the option two does happen, I think it would probably open up a one-of-six again, would be my view, six of them.
Yeah. I was having a feeling that this was a little bit like celestial, as a, it's a deja vu. But let me ask one last time then, after we, is there anyone else adding to the public comment? I will close the public comment section of this meeting. Thank you, Laura. And let me turn it back to the board. There have been a number of issues raised. We have heard a good three hours about worth of this item, a little less than that. Is anyone ready for potential discussion or motion? Is it something that people feel we'd like to have more advice from our attorney on some of the claims that have been raised, or how we'd like to proceed? Patty, you have your hand up first?
Yeah. Are we gonna let the applicant do a rebuttal to public comment, or just give him that part?
We could do that briefly. Thank you, Patty.
I just thought we should.
The only thing we wanted to rebut were some of the comments about the massing and just, just so you could see the, the separation of the two units.
Yeah. And I think just to respond on the architectural front, you know, using this diagram that's on the screen, in terms of the view planes up the mountain, they are going to be maintained. As part of the resolution was that if, in the two-home scenario, a 10-foot minimum setback between the homes above grade is required, and we're honoring that. And so, there are wider zones in between these two, and there's no point at which that they go below the requirement. In addition, the lot two house is able to build up to within five feet of our property line. And we've been working together with them on some plans to plant, as Bill Berenger pointed out, in between the, the two homes. As we're set back 15 feet from them, or 20 feet from them, they're set back only five feet from the lot line. And then, I think it's also probably worth just pointing out the mass of the, these three homes that we're kind of in a conversation with together. So, you know, so here's the larger home, here's the smaller home, and this is the neighboring home. And as I mentioned in my presentation, they were able to, to argue for a historic grade, kind of regrading through their site, which did allow them to lift up higher. So I think in terms of view corridors up the site, I'm not sure that it is entirely the right argument, given the size of the, the homes that are in discussion. And then I think in just closing on these comments, we're not asking for more square footage overall. We're in fact offering to build less square footage. So allowances for a singular 9,800-square-foot home, or if that were distributed across the two, we're requesting to build 9,300 square feet. So I think that's something that should be considered.
Okay.
Yeah, that we're proposing to actually build less square footage than we're allowed. We're just asking to redistribute. And in this redistribution, we're able to amortize the cost of construction on a larger small home and have a more expensive construction cost by cutting it into the hill and thereby kind of pulling it off the street, pulling it away from all the other houses, sinking it down into the ground. So I think just from a conceptual design standpoint, it's actually, I think, to the benefit of the neighborhood, to be able to pull this thing into the hill. And with a 1,300-square-foot home, you're just not able to support the cost of a 27-foot tall foundation retaining wall behind, you know, kind of under, creating this large underground space. So.
Yeah. Stan's hypothesis as to why the 1,300-square-foot house couldn't be pushed back is not the fact at all. The fact is, is what Zach has just said, that the 1,300-square-foot house just does not support the cost of forcing the, the square footage to the back. And frankly, we're offering the inducement to try to make it attractive to you, that option two has better features. Clearly.
Again, as Alan had said earlier, we're willing to permanently restrict that frontal portion of the smaller home to one-story. And we feel that benefits the neighbors around the end of Second Street. We feel frankly, it benefits lot two the most of any neighbor by keeping it to one-story. So we're frankly surprised at lot two's perspective of this. Lot two has had our option two plan since July 24th. In emails that were sent to them, those plans and elevations have not changed materially since July 24th. So for us to have a. a curb alternance at the 11th hour, we're baffled by that, frankly. Now, option one was introduced in our application, but that's not what we pursued from day one in our discussions with Lot Two. Lot Two has had our plans. Thank you.
Can I ask a question for the application? You said permanently restrict the building to one floor, one level? Well, what do you mean by permanently restrict? Isn't that part of the application you've just submitted that you're...
Well, he was saying that if a future owner wanted to demolish and rebuild the covenant, they would not be able to come in and request it.
So it would be covenant to permanently restrict? Okay.
Just similar to, similar to the covenant to permanently remove 1,500 feet of heated area from the overall project. And in summary, one last comment is, even if we left the FAR as allocated, 1343 on the small house, with the 4,000-foot of basement and 7,500-foot of above-grade garage, we still ended with a 6,093-square-foot house on option one.
Right. I think 4,000 square feet of subgrade underneath the house is 1,300 square feet is interesting.
It's been done.
I'm sure it has.
Look at the house.
A lot of wine cellars and a lot of cigar rooms.
The project right behind the Lime Island town, at the corner of Heim in there is...
Well, yeah, we know what the issues are.
Yeah, let's stay on this one. It is getting late. Thank you. And Alan, you've now finished your rebuttal to...
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. Board, it is now back to us. Initial thoughts, or Steve, you had a question?
Question for Suzanne. There's been this talk about that the 1,300-square-foot house was viewed as a CDU. And yet, I don't find where it actually says that in any of the...
The 2014 approval was specific that these are two free-market residences. There is not a requirement that one be de-restricted. I think one of, you know, one of the applications from Mr. Reader at one point in time, you know, talked about a single-family residence and a caretaker unit. But again, that's not the approval that we're working under at this point.
Is that ever in any of the county approvals, or, I mean, people have talked about it, but I haven't actually seen it.
Yeah, I'd have to go back and...
And I realize that the 2014 agreement supersedes any of the earlier ones.
2002 included a CDU approval. So that seems to be the only time there was one specific to a single-family residence and a caretaker dwelling unit. It was the 2002 approval. But then, again, the 2000, the vested, current vested approval is specific to two separate single-family residences.
I think that's what Laura was pursuing in the last years of his life. He had designs developed for a 9,800-square-foot single house. And he was, he was going to build a single house with a caretaker, so. But that wasn't the limit. It was just that was where he was going in terms of the development plan.
But in 2002, he would...
Okay, no. Thank you. Steve, does that answer your question?
Okay, that's all. I just wanted to clarify that while I think on my thoughts here.
Okay, thank you. Board, who would like to weigh in and give some impression here? Again, there is an option that we could continue this item if people would like advice from our attorney, or a chance to absorb any of the information that's been given to us today. Otherwise, someone stake something in the ground.
The fact that a lot of the objections from the neighbors have to do with whether the square footage should have been transferred from the parcel B to the bigger parcel is really a moot point because it was, it was done, that was approved, and we have this square footage number that is allowed and was approved by a series of decisions. And so they could build a bigger house than they're proposing to build, actually, because they're proposing to build something smaller than what is allowed. So then it seems like the objections of the neighbors just have to do with perhaps the design of the building or the view from the trail, the space between the buildings, and the use of the land if it were like two separate families living in the two separate ones, or whether it's one family controlling the two, and maybe one's their guest house, or, you know, that sort of a thing. When I look at the pictures, to me, the option two and option one do not look that much different. If you look from one direction, the profile of the smaller house is just similar to the profile of the smaller house in the option two. If you look from the trail side, the profile of the smaller house is pretty much the same as it is in the option one. It's just the way that, the way it's designed, and maybe it's, it is setback more into the hill, and that probably contributes to it. So my initial take on this is that option two is actually, in terms of the design of the buildings, is better than the option-one design with 1,300 square foot and 8,000 square foot. Both designs look very much the same.
Okay, I'll jump in. I just want to disclose that I've been involved with this property since 1999. We've been sitting through many meetings with many stakeholders in this room. And one of our biggest concerns, starting in 1999, was the rockfall issues in the Little Cloud subdivision, and the issues of services needed by larger homes. And that meant not just the people living there, but the people who are required to, or required, needed to serve those homes. And so I think with a smaller home and a larger home, I think you're going to have less services generated, the need for services generated. And even though we have a brujna, we have all those things, we're still putting people in an area that has concerns for rockfall issues. And we have seen the sizes of rocks that come down there. You know, walk the trails. I know the area. I know the dirt from one end to the other, and I have concerns about that. I'm concerned about the water rights on this property. I've always had a concern when I've been on the board in prior years about approving something and waiting for building permit for water rights to be established. I have concerns for the fact that we have outstanding water rights. We don't know if we're going to get water rights for two residential units, and for a large amount of landscaping issues that have been promised. So I have concern for that. I'm concerned about the stormwater, and I'll keep coming back to it until we have the City of Aspen. I live in Aspen, and I know the cost. If I was to build a porch on my little tiny house, I would have to mitigate every inch of that eve for stormwater management to keep it on my property at the Smuggler Trailer Court. So I know the impacts of the city's stormwater conditions. And I think we need to be very careful moving forward, even though this property is in the county, that water runs downhill, and the city is downhill from that property. I'm concerned. And I'm also concerned about the view plane and the massing of square footage. To me, no offense, Steve, but I think that the massing is going to look like one larger home. You know, the neighbor's home is setback a little further. It is a good-sized house. I mean, it's significant. So those are my concerns, and I'd like to hear from the rest of the board before I actually make the jump to option one or two. But I'm leaning in opposition to what Steve's going.
Michael?
So let me ask the applicant, would you be willing to further reduce your allotted square feet?
On either residence or both?
I'll let them decide.
Think about it.
Under the option-two plan, where we have a reallocation or more balancing of the FAR?
Yeah.
We, we discussed this some months ago, and I think I can defer with Matt on it. But if, if it was involving this upgrade space, we may consider something, but not of the above-grade floor area that's allowed, beyond the 500 that we're willing to relate to.
So do you have a square footage in mind?
If option two were approved, we may consider maybe another 500 feet of subgrade space. And we'd like to leave it open to us as to which home that may come from, if we may, please.
Still thinking.
Well, yeah, that's back to me. Well, Patty, I got you beat, because I think I've been working on this from the city side since I was first on there in '91. And similar to the comments we heard from Mr. Ferguson, the city was very upset about the land exchange that happened in the first place, that then put this property into potential development. So from my point of view, it's been somewhat of a mess for a very long time. And I also shared the disappointment that the efforts to save Shadow Mountain really couldn't go anywhere quite a while ago. But looking at where we are today, I see it as there will be two houses. That is the vested brands. And I like the balancing between the two residences, and I like the offer that's come on the table to reduce the total FAR as it was presented to us. I understand it was 1,500 square feet total. Some of that was above grade, and some of that was below grade. So that's, that's a close to 15% reduction from the 9,800. You know, I see lots of street-side cleanup, and I see lots of cleanup happening in that neighborhood that has really been a mess for a long time, for a variety of reasons. And I see sensitive treatment of the trail, the landscaping to come to the house, and those sort of things. You know, it was a lot of work for both the city and the county to get the Midland right of way and the trail and to maintain it. And similar to some of the other trails we have in this community, you get to a point when you're entering the urban context, you go down the Rio Grande, and there can be homes practically, you know, on your shoulder. And this is a trail that's really going into an urban context here. So there are approved self-divided lots on either side of it in a couple of different locations. I, I like that the residence has been moved down slope to see another one way up the hillside on that larger lot of 9,800 square feet, similar to a couple of the homes that are in the background, I think would be far more visually damaging than these homes down lower, closer to the trail. So I see a lot of advantages in this. I think Michael just asked for additional advantage, and I think that that really helps seal the deal for me, that I would support the option two. I have a small list. I'll just read them briefly of things that I, when I make sure we're in the resolution, should it go forward. But from one of the comment letters from one that came in at the end was that vegetation should not attract bears. So you don't want choke cherries or things like that that bring bears into these neighborhoods. And looking at the landscaping here, I'm not going to make a firm recommendation, but I certainly hope you would consider some evergreens as well, so that when they shed their leaves in the fall, perhaps intersperse a little evergreen in there. There was a discussion about landscaping agreements and dollar amounts that you were going to spend. I was curious as to how those are enforced, and who are they between? And so it's either memorialized within our approved landscaping plan, or something like that, but...
It was between the two lots.
That's what I understand, but it was represented to us, and so we need to somehow memorialize it in the final resolution. I don't want to state a dollar amount or something like that, but that there would be a landscaping plan acceptable to the county, and your contract with the neighbors is separate from us for the side lot and things like that. Another concern that was raised by a neighbor was the construction management and parking during the construction phase. I believe that's handled separately from our resolution, and there would be a construction management plan that dealt with runoff and issues like that, parking of the workers. That would be separate from this resolution. Also, there was questions raised about the fire access. And again, it's my understanding that that's something the fire marshal will sign off on. And so we would, you know, defer to their authority and to their concerns on how to access the homes. They won't approve it if they don't like the access, believe in me. And then there was a little bit of question was raised about the relationship with the stormwater management, the AgeX affordable housing, and the city. And so I am not sure how we best need to deal with that, because this property is in the county, but it'll be draining to the city. And to, I think that Mr. Fornell raised some good issues to make sure that nothing we approve makes their situation worse. And perhaps we should have a clause that if, if the systems as designed fail or are not adequate to protect the little AgeX homeowners, then this lot would be required to look at that and do something again, something like that. But I think that we need to have something that, it was in the Section 7 regarding the little fence, that needs to be much more thoroughly fleshed out, so that expectations are clear on our parties. But those are my thoughts of things that may be missing in the resolution if the board were to move forward with a option two. And I expressed my concern, my interest there. Michael?
Just on the issue, I think the city is capable of protecting its interests and the interests of people who are resident in the city. So if we were to include, I mean, I don't quite understand why we'd want to include anything. The city's a mature jurisdiction. It can, it can protect its interests and the interests of its, of its residents. I don't see, we'd be sort of, I mean, we could acknowledge that we want that to happen, but I don't see how we would get a, an agreement to that, because in effect, that's in the city's interest, so.
Yeah, I guess I was just trying to outline that we've heard comments related to this parcel's in the county, but it will drain into the city. And will it drain across another property? How do we prevent that from happening or affect their system? I agree with you, Michael. The city has got permitting authority across the driveway and the other work, and so I'm fairly sure they're not going to let a bad situation go forward. But again, I think it's worth noting, when we approve this drainage system, that the applicant is committing to make it work, and that it won't negatively impact the AgeX condominiums. You know, that's, that's kind of what I'd be looking for there. Okay, back around to you guys. Where's your direction?
Well, I, I agree with you and Steve. And, I mean, I would like a larger concession on square footage, but frankly, you offered 500 feet. I'd like, I'd like to have a 2,000 square foot total, rather than, I mean, 2,500, rather than 15, 500 for the residential and 2,000 below. So that's, that's where I'd like to go.
Okay. That's not on top of what they already put forward. You're saying you'd like the total they put forward to be 2,500. Okay. George?
It's unfortunate that we're always dealing with what I see as this conspicuous consumption. You know, we always have to build bigger and bigger. And what we're trying to do is keep our community and the resort in balance with our environment. And unfortunately, we don't seem to be able to do that. We don't seem to be able to really address our energy use. I'm sorry to see or hear that you're thinking about doing a snowmelt driveway for not a very steep drive. Again, it's, it's consumptuous use of energy. We're all in the midst of trying to address climate change. And so that's, that's a value, community value. I'm not going to change your values, but it bothers me. The thought that, that you could build a 1,300-square-foot house and have a 3,000-square-foot subgrade, to me, just doesn't make any sense at all, in terms of, again, what you're trying to do. The, the, the argument about the trail, that doesn't have a lot of salable points to me. This is, this is really an urban trail. We're not in a rural area. We're basically in the City of Aspen. And when I walk around the City of Aspen, if I walk around the West End, or I used to run along that trail before there were any homes there, now you've got homes along that stretch. So the idea that, that one home or two homes are going to impact the enjoyment of the trail, for me, is not a salable argument. I think people walk along the trail and use it as a way to get from point A to point B. Maybe homes actually draw some interest as to walking by or looking at the landscape. And certainly, when I walk through the West End in the summertime, one of the attractions is this, sort of the beautiful gardens. One could view those as trails. So, so that part of the argument doesn't really do much to me. I think that, design-wise, I mean, an architect can do whatever one can do to make a design more palatable for... more palatable for, for building site. We went through this within, with an application, and I just said, well, you had an award-winning design on this size unit, you could probably have an award-winning size if you increased that by 3,000, 4,000 square feet. So that's, that's, that's your, that's an architect's profession. So that doesn't really, there's not much argument there. What I'm leaning towards, though, is the idea of trying to reduce the overall, the overall square footage. And I, again, I could never quite understand why the city would, would allow such a large subgrade and not count into the overall FAR. But that's, that's a land use code.
That's actually our code.
Yeah, well, we coincide, we coincide with the city. And that really never really made sense to me either. But that's not here nor there in terms of this argument. So I would really support the idea presented that we should look at, offer to approve the redistribution of square footage. However, to reduce those subgrades more substantially than 500 square feet, that's like a drop in a bucket if you look at 19,000 square feet total. You need to really rethink that and come up with something that, that is really shows a little more understanding concern for, for you. So if you can get to that point, then I could support the redistribution of those two FAR homes.
Oh, yes, Patty?
Yeah, George, I'm still going to go back to the fact that even if they do the 3,000 square foot house, putting in subgrade, I, I don't think we're winning a lot by reducing subgrade. I think if you guys want to win anything, it has to be above grade. And I understand the financial concerns and, you know, the issue that it's too expensive to build a house properly back into the hill because it's too expensive. I understand that. And, you know, that's up to the owner of the property to make that decision of how much money they want to spend to build a better project. Or if they want to just get more square footage so they can afford to build a better project. The impacts of that square footage above grade are bothersome to me in that area. And, and so I'm still kind of sticking to option one.
Yeah. You know, I, I can appreciate that, Patty. But subgrade space tends to get used pretty heavily.
I know.
And, you know, I think that part of the issue is, is as George is pointing out, it's our overall codes. It's our codes that allowed it. It's deals that were made to save Van Horn Park from 11 homes, you know, back in the day that landed down there. And I guess I just have, I mean, I, I agree with the reduction that has been asked for. Or perhaps after this brief conversation, a recess might be appropriate. You guys can discuss this and see what come back with. But I hate slamming the door on the fingers of the last person in the neighborhood. You know, there is a 10,000 square foot home going up now next door that's going to be much more highly visible. And so, yes, I do agree and support what people have called for in terms of reducing. But on the other hand, I'm not going to try to say this home should be this size, but, you know, those ones we just live with because those were older mistakes, because they are very substantial homes. And the other kind of small thing I would point out is when the county developed Twin Ridge Affordable Housing, three-bedroom, the only single families I think we ever did, 1,500 was considered the size for a minimum for that three-bedroom home. And then I think that as, you know, things went further and the zoning occurred out for the north 40, it was up to about 2,500 square feet. I'm not saying that you go there, but I, I did one at least so that even the 1,300 seemed to be below what we would consider appropriate for a three-bedroom affordable housing unit. Board, does a recess seem like it's in order and give the applicants a chance to think about Michael's proposition?
Would the applicants like a moment to themselves?
Perhaps five, eight minutes would be appreciated.
Well, let's, let's have a 10-minute recess. And we'll meet back here at 4:33. Thank you. 10 minutes.
I understand. I'm waiting for these guys to answer.
Okay. It sounds like you want a continuance?
Can we ask a question?
Let's get back on TV, but we're, we're rolling now. Grassroots are on. Thank you so much. We have now reconvened the meeting on the Lot 20 Little Cloud Site Plan Review and Major Amendment to Development Permit. Our applicants have had a chance to talk a little bit amongst themselves. What do you think? What do you, what do you have to tell us?
We have a question, perhaps either Alan or Mark can articulate it.
Well, Alan was talking with Lance, and we're, we're trying to understand the implications of the floor area reduction and Michael's proposal, which we understood, Michael, to be another 500 feet of subgrade that we would give up.
Well, that's what your proposal was. And I was asking for 1,000.
Right, a second.
So 2,500 total.
Two of which is subgrade.
2,000 of which would be subgrade and 500 would be...
Their original, their original proposal...
I could live with that. I prefer it reversed, but I could, you could live with it.
Right, right. So we're understanding it correctly?
We're understanding that correctly, though. And then, Bill, the question is, what happens if, in the unlikely event of a one-home scenario?
Right. In the future, if for some reason, you know, we're taking to heart what our neighbors are saying about one home versus two home, and for some reason we all collaborate and we end up with a one-home project to appease them, what, we, we would like this reduction to apply only to if two homes are built.
Yeah, because what you're saying accurately is you cannot have two approvals. This approval will supersede your other approval.
That's what I came to understand from talking with the staff, yes.
Yes. And so what you're requesting is that there would be some sort of language to reserve the original square footage in option one if you default and go back to option one.
Correct. If we add BS to the neighbors and worked something out with the neighbors and it's pretty cooperation.
What does our attorney think of that?
Well, so it's, it seems as though it's an amendment to this application for amendment. Does everybody follow that?
More of a clarified condition, I assume.
They want everything.
Yeah. I, I, that may be your characterization.
So, can I, can I do a clarification? Michael, your point was for the reduction, 2,000 square feet subgrade, 500 above grade, to run with land. There was a covenant to be imposed on the land, right? Isn't that what you wanted? So that they couldn't come back in in two years and add on 500 square feet or 1,500 or...
It was 98 to begin with.
Well, I mean, the approval would run with the land. I mean, your, your resolutions get recorded, so...
I thought it was a little stiffer than that, but...
Yeah. Well, it was presented by the applicant that if the garage would be a one-story, that would run with the land. And that would not be able to be changed with a future...
Sorry to interrupt, I thought Michael was saying that way, too.
It's gotten too complicated for me to understand.
And so, you know, I'm sorry, between Suzanne and Laura.
I'm just trying to get clear about, I, I don't know, is there anything in there that would... I was just saying, I guess my question or my statement to Laura was, this is a site plan approval specific to two houses as proposed, whatever those square footages may be. If that site plan is not acted upon, then I guess what? Is there any ability to revert back to that activity envelope approval?
That's what I asked.
Which, again, is only vested to... So no, you're saying, okay. I guess that wasn't part of that conversation.
The resolution is, the resolution is...
Because it was an amendment to the approval as well.
So it's an amendment.
That you got activity.
Yeah, I can understand that. But what they're saying now is that they want to go back to one house?
Well, not that we would want to, but if discussions with the, with the neighbors, if requirements imposed on us place us in that position of, of coming forward with a single-family option, is there a way to have that spoken to in these approvals at all?
So you want us to approve the two houses and the one house at the same time, like so you can pick either one?
No, no.
No, we would clearly have to come back to you.
You have to come back.
We'd have to come back to you with a site plan showing that unquestionably.
And then we, we could approve it or stay with the two houses.
I suppose the only way to do that is for us to just come in and try to amend this to your approval.
This, this is what I'm, I'm hearing and I'm feeling from this meeting. This item needs to be continued. And we cannot grant either ors. We really can't. We, we don't have that ability.
I understand.
And so...
We did the task.
Yes, I, I pretend that you asked. And...
And you've told us.
What it seems to me is that you should talk with your neighbors further and come up with a solid proposal if you want the option one that details and outlines the response to the request you've heard to the board and what you are willing to put on the table to further option two. And if you have decided you really don't want to pursue option two, your existing approvals are in place, you can go to that home, you don't have to come back and see us other than site plan, and that would be that. But I, I don't know how we can go down both paths at the same time as a board.
Or if they want to do one, one house now.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. They could go back to the current option one.
Option one is two houses.
Currently, one large house. There would be no reductions.
No, option one is two houses. They're talking about one house.
Patty, I'm sorry, Patty, if you would stop interrupting me. I, I was trying to say that they could go back to the original document, which does allow them to have one house, or what is the current option one, which is the small division, or option two, which they've asked us for today. So those would, those first two would be your options under your existing vesting rights. Yes.
And, yeah, and thank you for all, all the consideration. In this, in this negotiation, it's sort of, of additional 1,000 square feet, we really do need to consider that, and so...
Okay. Would, Steve?
Well, I was thinking that a continuation could be in order because the applicant, in thinking over the options, might be able to reduce the size of it to by the additional 1,000 square feet. Or they might decide to go to a one-house option.
Yes.
In a, in a two-week interim period, they'd have some time to think about that. So it gives them time so you don't have to decide in five minutes right now under the...
We appreciate that. I'd say...
Okay. In terms of a continuance, we have a regular meeting on the 24th. I'm not sure if Lance or Suzanne will tell us how full that's getting. Just so you know, I would not be here, you would have a four-person board, which we always advise people, I'll be in Washington DC for business. The other regular meeting would be on March 9th. And I believe we have a full board in attendance as far as I understand. So...
March 9th, please.
March 9th.
I'm moving to continue the hearing till March 9th.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Steve?
There are some points, I was rereading this letter from Andrea Chaney from the neighborhood. And there's things in there that I thought maybe should be included.
I recaptured those and pointed this out to Suzanne when I was telling her what I thought should be in the resolution.
Well, one had to do with the snow storage pile area. Did you, is that one point?
Well, I think that's one that the applicants have said they dealt with in our application.
I think that was the main one of something that...
Stuck out.
Put a condition in.
Yes, and we'll be sure that the snow storage is taken care of well in the final resolution. My comment would be, I really hope we can come forward with a very clear proposal if you're doing the option two. And if you've decided to work things or able to find things that work out with your neighbors, God bless you. Okay.
We want to take into serious consideration Michael's suggestions. It's a, it's a meaningful impact, so...
I understand, I understand. There's a lot of, and so we have a motion on the table and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Thank you very much. Thank you to everyone. Go in peace. See what happens. And now we have on our agenda an executive session. Are there any open discussion items that you need to cover with us today, John?
Rachel, you'd brought one forward on the CMC visioning statement. CMC visioning.
Oh, yes.
If you want to talk about that. CMC, actually...
And please take all the conversations out of the room so we can just finish up quickly.
What I'd suggest, we can do that next week because it's not...
I, I got an email, they're having a meeting, it's during one of our Tuesday meetings, that they're actually envisioning what's going to happen with the CMC campus here, what type of new things we'd need and things like that. And since relationships with CMC came up at our retreat and the, through some of our guest speakers about the advantages there, I thought it might be interesting to have us have some conversation or, or someone from staff perhaps attending that visioning session. We see some pretty significant property tax dollars go out of Picken County to CMC. And so I think it'd be very valuable to have some input to that. And I, but I do think it's one of our Tuesday meetings. Is it the 20th, John?
It's the 23rd.
The 23rd.
Around 3 o'clock to 4:30. But we can maybe visit that next week.
Okay. Well, again, I just wanted to note that it did coincide with some of the comments we heard about CMC having dorms or does CMC have different types of programs? Michael?
So do you know for a fact that the taxes that go to CMC from Picken County are dispersed high square outside of Picken County?
It goes into the larger organization, just like our taxes go into Rafta. And it's a mix and match at that point.
So, okay. I mean, I just didn't know. So I'm not trying to challenge you, I just didn't know.
No, it just goes into the larger district.
Can I bring up an open discussion?
Yes, please.
Well, one of the things that occurred to me traveling up and down 82 is that the airport access to Highway 82 going into town, there's a long road, you know, is used by many people to bypass traffic slowdown. And it's also used, I think innocently in this case, by vans that pick up passengers at the airport, transport them to town. But when traffic is congested, that access lane essentially blocks the bus lane and stops buses. I mean, that's my initial impression of what happens. And of course, if you haven't used the airport as a shortcut and you're waiting in line, you feel somewhat aggrieved because, because you're just not as smart as the people who are cheating. So I think we should consider eliminating that access to the highway. And if people need to get to the highway from the airport, they go to the light and wait at that light and then access. Because it's, because, and we talked about this at our retreat, about valley mobility. There's other points within the mobility system that are, that are challenged. But this is, this is something within county, within county control to, to do. And I think we should investigate it at the very least.
And I would suggest a, a work session, you know, to, to, you know, have a discussion around it because, you know, there, that's where we have the carpooling access. There are some other things impacted that I think were joint decisions with EOTC. Doesn't mean that we can't do it, there's just more issues to consider there.
And I think, you know, at the time when we had that carpooling access and stuff, the traffic wasn't that bad. But now it's reached a point where it's essentially solid traffic to the buttermilk light. And people are not willing to actually let people merge in. So they've stuck them out there and it's problematic. You probably know more about it than...
Oh, buses, buses get stuck.
Yeah, so, so that's, so the buses get stuck, we need to address that issue.
I, I agree with that. And we're not going to go into any depth on that. It's a great point. I know, I appreciate you bringing it up. And as John was saying, it does involve where the city issues carpool permits. So some people pulling in there are getting the carpool permit and then using that to park in town.
I don't think they were issuing carpool permits there anymore.
I, I believe so.
They, they stopped that for a while, trying to come into town.
Yeah. So anyhow, there's partnerships in it, but, you know, there, there may be some solutions that work in the short-term signage and it may just have to be a physical structure change. I agree with that. Great point for bringing up. Anybody else have some open discussion items?
I'm just curious, because I saw Mike Kramer hanging out for a while. Was he, did he have something for us?
He was going to follow up on the open discussion, but I, from yesterday, but I think given that this went a little bit longer than we all anticipated and we have the exact...
I think we had an email from the Forest Service with a permitting, that they want to make permits of certain types good for five years instead of every year. And I asked him to go check with John Ely about that. The deadline for comments is in March, so there's a little more time on that since we ran late today.
So it wasn't the bike?
No, it was not the bike list. We already did that the other day.
It's not a race, it's, it's a ride.
The grand fun. And just real quick for the, the public, if my thing would cooperate, next week we will be having our environmental assessment. Yeah, for the airport, and so that's for the terminal and airfield improvements. Tuesday, February 16th, 4:30 to 6:30 at the Limelight Hotel, and then Thursday, February 18th, Snowmass Council Chambers, also from 4:30 to 6:30. We've also reached out in a number of ways, letters and such, to seek comments or scoping comments from our municipal partners and other partners in the community, so.
What opportunities does that afford the public?
The open houses?
Yes.
For example, so what we'll be doing is presenting models of the proposed developments from the master plan. So that includes the kind of the stacked model for the airport terminal design concept that the board reviewed, as well as the airfield changes, the separation from the taxiway and runways, and then to engage in a discussion about what kind of concerns would they like to have considered in the environmental assessment. So if members of the public have particular concerns, for example, noise or air quality or socioeconomic concerns, you know, if it's not done or is done, this is an opportunity to raise those concerns and have them scoped into the environmental assessment process.
While we're talking about meetings that have been scheduled, I know that the Salt River Park meeting had to be canceled because of the large snowstorm last week. When has, has that been rescheduled?
So it was rescheduled to this past Monday, it was held on Monday.
Okay, super. I was unable to get to that with some other commitments, but I wanted to make sure I hadn't missed it. I guess I did. So we now have executive session on the agenda. We're going to cut it fairly short to items that are most timely we were not able to cover. I don't have citations here with me to call that motion.
CRS 4024.
The thing is, I wasn't sure how long one or two, five minutes.
Yeah, relatively brief, we're going to be relatively brief, but.
No, I like that approach, because I'm punching it all yet out.
We haven't made the motion yet.
I know, but that's just a list from yesterday, and so I'm trying to see what would be appropriate to pick.
George?
And I was just going to say, what is urgent that we need to do today versus next week?
Yes, I think there are a few water or district issues that I need to update the board on. I don't know if you have something other than that, John?
I had actually quite a few issues involving water. They can all wait until Tuesday, provided I can get to you Tuesday. I just needed to confer with the board before the end of next week. So I'm comfortable.
John, what is our schedule looking like for Tuesday? I know we had talked about.
Well, it looks like we're going to start earlier. So we had originally talked about starting around 11:30. You do have the joint meeting with the city that goes till 6:00. My suggestion may be that I confer with John and just understand how much time we need. It may be a 10 o'clock start even with a brown bag lunch depending.
If it's a 10 o'clock start, let's have staff provide lunch for us.
Be happy to do, I make a great PB and J.
Okay.
Since it's only a long day, let's.
Yeah, that's fair.
Okay, so if we really can squeeze this in next week, we probably don't have to go into executive today, is that what you're saying, John?
I'm fine with that, and all five members are here next weekend.
Just on Tuesday?
On Tuesday, and that's it, so.
Okay, well, then in that case, we will not have an executive session, and I will accept a motion to adjourn.
Some move.
Second, third.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you, Grassroots.
Thank you, Grassroots. Did I need to sign that before?